Michael Mathis with us? Alrighty, I see you now. I don't want to miss you. At this time, I'll call our regular meeting to order. We have with us tonight Pastor Michael Mathis from the Mission Phil Ministries to lead us in our invocation, followed by our pledge of allegiance. If you will, all please rise.
Oh God, you have been our dwelling place in all generations. Even before the mountains were brought forth, ever you did form the earth in the world. From everlasting to everlasting, you alone are God. We thank you now, God, for your sovereignty and how you are right in the midst of our meeting tonight. We especially thank you, God, for the leadership of Hope Mills. Always giving you thanks, God, for all that you continue to do in your loving kindness and your patience with us. And God, we ask you now, wherever there be sin, or wherever there's a hindrance from us hearing from you this evening, God, we ask that you would forgive all of us collectively and individually. Thank you for our Mayor Jackie Warner. Thank you for how you continue to shield and protect her and her family as she lead the town of Hope Mills. Thank you for all of the commissioners, God, and all of our staff. Thank you, God, for how you shield and protect them. We do pray for them, God, that you'll continue to bless and endow them with wisdom to lead this town. We're always so especially grateful, God, for our first responders, how they so willingly put their lives in harm's way to protect the citizens here, God, both near and far. Thank you. And we pray, God, that you would keep warning angels at their backs when they're turned around their vehicles, oh God, protecting their families, God, even as they go out and they come back in. We thank you. And God, we're continually grateful for how you continue to build this city, prosper this city. Thank you for the park area and the dam and the lake being replenished. Thank you, God, for how you're continuing to stay with the leadership and the town of Hope Mills. And now, Lord, we call upon you again, although the agenda has been set. We call on you, God, that you would endow the leadership with your wisdom. Man has wisdom, but it's godly wisdom that we seek here. And we thank you now, and we commit everything into your hands this evening. In Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. At this time, is there any additions or deletions to the agenda that's before you? If not, do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion, Madam Mayor.
Have a motion to approve? Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none opposed. The first thing on our agenda tonight is a presentation by Terry Young with the Project Lone Survivor. At this time, I'll turn over the microphone at the podium to Mr. Young and those that are with him.
God bless America. Thanks to all of you on the commission, commissioners tonight. Thank you to the management team of the town of Hope Mills for giving us the opportunity to present here and to the public tonight. I want to thank all our supporters that are here. We've had amazing support, not just in Hope Mills, but throughout Cumberland County for over a year now. And we are very grateful and thankful. And it's because of your support, frankly, that we're here tonight. And then I want to also thank all of those who have served our country, our veterans, which is what we're all about. I'm Terry Young. I'm the executive director of the Lone Survivor Foundation that's home based out of Houston, Texas. I've had the privilege of being the executive director of the foundation for the past seven years and serving our veterans. The Lone Survivor Foundation was founded by a well-known individual by the name of Marcus Luttrell, Navy SEAL. Who maybe some of you have seen the movie Lone Survivor? That's Marcus. He's the man that founded this. And it was based on his premise of how to heal a soldier from the wounds of war, the silent wounds of war, that this foundation was created. And if you've seen the movie or read the book, you know, he's a gentleman who knew something about wounds and the healing of them that was needed. And so, we started out and we do retreats for our veterans. We do retreats for the caretakers. We do retreats for couples and families. We're very family-centric in our solution to things. Our retreats are health and wellness-oriented retreats. These are not recreational retreats, although there is some recreation in it. But the real focus is on restoring hope and empowering these soldiers to get back into the workforce. I'm blessed tonight to have with me several people that are part of our foundation. First of all, I'd like to introduce you to Tim Byram, who's in the back of the room. Tim is the president of our board of directors. Also with us is Morgan Sierra, who is retiring 20 years, military police this year. Morgan will be the North Carolina Regional Director for the Lone Survivor Foundation. Morgan's been working tirelessly already for the last year as a volunteer, and we're grateful for her. And then we have two individuals that are with us tonight that are actually retreat attendees that hopefully at the end of the night can share a little bit with you. But Colly Arbors in the back here, and then Lindsey Knapp. Thank you both for being here. I'm here tonight because I've been encouraged by a lot of our supporters to bring conversations that happened back in June more to the public light and to clarify from our position where Lone Survivor stands on some of these issues. There was a lot of communications and a lot of things that went on that I think maybe left unclear the real intent and the real position of Lone Survivor. And so, we wanted to make sure that the public was totally aware of what that was, as well as make sure that the commissioners were aware of what our position was. I am not here tonight in any way to criticize, to express any kind of disappointment or to become involved in the Hope Mills politics in any way whatsoever. I am here representing the veterans of our country and their families, and only that, and to that end only. We have a expression that is one of our credos at the Lone Survivor Foundation that goes something like, never quit on those who never quit on us. And that's why I'm here tonight, because I'm not ready to quit on a project that we think can be extremely beneficial, not just for the soldiers and their families, but for the town of Hope Mills, the county of Cumberland County, et cetera. So with that said, I'd like to address the fact of a little bit about who Lone Survivor is in a little more detail, mainly so some of you who don't know about Lone Survivor and what we do can understand a little bit better, make sure the commission gets a little more insight on this. But we've been doing retreats for eight years now in the health and wellness area. There is no other organization in the United States that has done more health and wellness retreats for our veterans and their families than the Lone Survivor Foundation. As I said earlier, these are not recreational retreats. These are retreats that help our soldiers to get back into the workforce. As many of you know, you hear all the time about 22 soldiers die every day from suicide. That's a way underestimated number. The definition of suicide is frankly quite appalling how it's defined. There's a lot more dying. We are proactive on the front end and hopefully can stop some of these suicides from happening. And that's what we are all about. We have a retreat facility in Texas down on Bolivar Peninsula. It's a waterfront property that we have. We did 38 retreats there last year. And frankly, we've maxed out. We don't have enough capacity physically to continue to see the demand for the soldiers that we need to help. When we look at the demographics, and we have soldiers from all over the world. Cost-free to the soldiers. These retreats are free to the soldiers and their families. That includes airfare to get to the retreats, all the food, all the housing. Everything is taken care of. And P.S., not one dime comes from any government organization. Not local, not state, not federal. It's all privately funded money that we get. We have reached a point where we need to reach out and find another location to build, to bring more families and veterans to the treatment that we provide. When we look at our demographics, in 2018 alone, 30% of all of the soldiers that are coming to our retreats come from North Carolina, Virginia, and West Virginia. 30%. So where logically would you build a facility? In one of those, yeah, in Alaska. So we started, we came here about a year ago and started looking really at the suggestion of a party that was going to donate some property to us to start to build on there. And before we got at all involved, I took on a two-month project here of doing awareness events around the Cumberland County area. Because what I wanted to know is, we knew demographically this was the right place to be. But what I wanted to know was, was the heart of the people the right place to be here? And I was shockingly pleased at how positive the response was of all the people here. And again, that's why I'm here. Because we had so much support from the people, it would be foolish for me not to be here and do everything I can to make clear what we are trying to do. So what we are trying to do is we're trying to find a new location to build. We have spent over $100,000 already in developing and getting ready for a facility here. I think you all may not have seen this yet, but this is an actual 3D rendition. All the blueprints are in place. We are ready to rock and roll. We just literally have to determine a couple of requirements on the foundation, which is determined by where the location is. But this is a 100 square foot facility, which will be built somewhere in the North Carolina area to help our veterans and their soldiers. And our intent is to do as many as 40 retreats a year here in North Carolina. That's a lot of soldiers and a lot of help for people. So a lot of work has gone into this. Anne Marie Locklear, who's in the back, she's our designer as well as our general manager on this project. And we're blessed to have her. Her family grew up here in Hope Mills, and so they know the area very well, so we're very grateful for that. This is a facility also that our board has committed $1.2 million of our own funds to build this facility. That's out of Lone Survivor's pocket if we need to do that. In addition to that, we have a commitment, or a pledge, I should say, this way, of another $400,000 towards this project already. That's enough money to make this thing happen right on its own, right now. So this is not a project that we are looking, and I want to clear this up, there to be no misunderstandings. We're not looking for a handout here. We're not looking for a donation. We are willing to pay a price for this piece of property that is located at 4562, I believe is. Calico Drive is the actual address of it. I guess some people know it. I didn't know this until recently. It's, I guess, known within the community as Lake Two within Plan 2030. I think that's, is that fair? I'm not sure. I don't know what Plan 2030 is, so. But that, we're looking at a piece of that, not the whole range. There's about 19 acres in there, of which about four acres are usable, that you can actually build on. The rest is all wetlands and probably couldn't be used for anything other than wetland purposes that they could be here to build a lake down in the future, if you want to do something like that. Lone Survivor looked, I have been looking, I have looked at well over 50 properties in Cumberland County. And this is the property that the healing can happen for our soldiers. It's one of those where you walk on the property and you go, this is it. This is what we're looking for. There's serenity there, there's peace there. There is also a nice thing with this water and the sewer right there also, which is very helpful. Power lines are there. There's things that to another person that's trying to do something there that could be restrictive, because those are access areas that go there that restrict what can be used. But this area is something that Lone Survivor is willing to pay a reasonable, fair price for, this property. We are not looking for a handout. And I think there was, at least in some of the communication I was seeing, some indication that that was not the case. And I want to make sure that is totally clear to everybody here. We are that high on this property. And I will tell you, we've had other opportunities. People say, we'll donate a property to you. It's not the right property. It's not that easy to find the right property to do the healing kind of things that we do. There has to be peace, there has to be tranquility. You have to get people away from it. This is a rare piece of property. Some of our people like Morgan, I remember Morgan's reaction the first time she walked out was just like everybody else. She was like, when do we start? When do we go? And so, you know, there's a lot of things we can talk about here. But for me, our whole thing is we want to help soldiers. And we don't just help the veterans. We help the spouses. We do caretaker retreats, because we believe at Lone Survivor, if you're going to heal a soldier, you've got to heal the whole family. And that's been the way we've always been with this. And we do progressive retreats. And we do retreats. What I mean by progressive retreats is we would do a retreat for a veteran and then a retreat also for the caretaker. And then maybe six months later, we bring them together for a couples retreat. And then six, 18 months after that, we bring them together for a family retreat. And we do that because we learned a hard way, which a lot of organizations are still learning at this day, you can't just call everybody together to family retreat and say, okay, let's all make it all better at one time. You've got to work on the individual first. You've got to get the individual to work on themselves and to get stronger themselves before you can work on a couple. Then you bring the couple, and you can go from the you to the we, and then you bring the children in. And I don't know how many of you are not just veterans, but also children of veterans. I am. I'm the son of a Purple Heart veteran who was a prisoner of war for three years. Lost both of his legs, served in this country. He's the reason I'm here today. I'm here in dedication to him and other soldiers just like him doing that. I lost a son in Afghanistan. I've gone through a lot of the traumas that are happening with our soldiers here today. And this is something that I am passionate about. As I said earlier, I will never quit on those who never quit on us. And when I see something that is so great, is in front of us here with this property, we are willing to do whatever. We know this, I don't understand all the details on consideration about this lake development and all of that, but I do believe that we can work around that too. I mean, there are things, it's down the road. I mean, we can have give-back clauses. I mean, the property, maybe we just buy the acres that's outside of the flood zone. And when you flood it, hey, we wouldn't mind having a lakefront for the retreat attendees to have either, you know? That would be a good thing. So we think there's a lot of ways that we can get to these things and work at these things. And so, tonight, I'm really looking to just hopefully let the public know who we are and what we stand for. First of all, we don't pay a lot of money. 80% of every dime that comes into the Lone Survivor Foundation goes back to the soldiers and their families. We have 11 employees doing 38 retreats a year. We can bring jobs. We can bring employment to the city of Hope Mills. We can bring recognition, because we bring soldiers from all over the world. The facility we have in Texas is on a peninsula called Bolivar Peninsula. Bolivar Peninsula is a place that's hardly known by anybody. In the veteran community, I would say it wasn't known that it even existed. Now it is known, it's on the face of the map. And not only do the veterans know, but the community has gotten behind so much of what's happening down there that that is part of what we get excited when we find a town like Hope Mills, that we believe is a town that can get behind and be part of the veteran support that we bring. And we're just really hopeful that an opportunity will be here that there's no misunderstandings about, we want this property and we're willing to go as far as we can to do something to make this happen, whatever it is. And so, with that being said, I don't know, do any of my other comrades in arms here want to say anything? With that, that's what we have to say, and I thank you guys for your time, your attention. And we hope, you know, that this is something that can be considered and revisited and figured out what can work here for everybody's benefit. So thank you.
Thank you so much for coming this evening. I appreciate that. And one obstacle that I would like to bring to the attention of the public is that, and with PWC being here tonight, I think that's a good thing to know, is that the PWC has no intention, will not permit, and do not plan on making a lake reservoir at Hope Mills Number Two. And that is in writing, and it came from Mick Nolan, who is over those resources. They did a study back in 1999, and from that study, they did identify areas, primarily because there was concern about Cape Fear River. But now the Cape Fear River is a water source for 2050. And financially, and as far as being a financially sound decision to put back a dam on Hope Mills Number Two, it's not feasible. It'd be too costly, and it would also be too risky, because of the amount of environmental issues. They don't believe Army Corps of Engineer would even permit it or damn safety. So that one obstacle about being a reservoir, for whatever reason, it's not possible through PWC. And I don't believe this board nor this town would want us to invest another 10-plus million dollars to put a dam back for a use of recreation when we have a beautiful Hope Mills Lake now. So having said that, I did want that to be clarified, especially for you, Mr. Young, that that obstacle is not there now. Thank you. Next thing we have is present-
Madam Mayor-
Yes, sir?
We'd like to clear the air tonight.
Okay.
We're all tied to veterans and the military. My father retired as a major. He got direct commission after World War II. A third of my clientele in my CPA practice are anywhere from Delta Force, Special Forces, the regular airborne, or what have you. We're very supportive of the military. And this particular instance, about a month ago, I'll say, first of all, kudos to Lone Survivor, they're an excellent organization, nothing against them. We think they're quality outfits. And I solely voted not to sell the property of about 28 acres for the $28,000, solely because McAdams Group, who was doing our comprehensive Parks and Recreation Plan, said that we don't have enough property right now for our Parks and Rec needs, and that we actually need to buy more property. And that was the reason for my decision. But I always wanted, I think we all can clear the air tonight. The vote went four to one. We honestly didn't know what was happening. We were going in a closed session to talk about a real estate and business development deal. And then we got the presentation from the Cumberland County Business Development folks, and as well as Lone Survivor. So it was an excellent presentation. But we did have citizens waiting out there. We spent about an hour and a half in closed session trying to make an informed decision. And of course, we wouldn't necessarily decide to sell any town property in an hour and a half timeframe. We wanted to study on it, and we did that. And we met again in another closed session, and at that point, made a decision. But we do appreciate Terry Young and all his folks coming up here. And it's definitely a worthwhile cause, it's just not the right location, as far as I'm concerned, as one individual commissioner. And if the other commissioners want to speak to it, that's fine.
Mayor Warner?
Yes, ma'am. I wasn't going to say anything, but since we're going to air things out, I'll try to do it now. I was one that voted for it, and I'll stand behind it. And 3/4 of the Hope Mills is military, military-related. I don't know where it would be right now if it wasn't for the military. And you think about what they have sacrificed, and what their families have gone through. Children that have been left without a mother or father. So that we could have our freedom in this beautiful USA that we belong to. As far as I was concerned, for what they wanted, I would be, and I'm sure a lot of Hope Millians would be very happy, to give them the four acres to build their property on. Because in the long run, Hope Mills will benefit by it. So will the military, which is our main concern. And that was the reason for I, the reason I voted for it.
Madam Mayor? Madam Moore?
Yes, sir, just a second. And to respond to having closed session meeting about economic development, if you'll notice, that was recommended, because anytime you have acquisition of property or anytime you talk property, you do do that and then bring the decision out into open session. So with economic development, we are privileged sometimes to get information about sale of property. And when we get that information, I guess Robert could speak to that. This happens all over Cumberland County. You meet prior to bringing it out in the open in the public, mainly so you can get all the facts and all the information. So again, I don't have a vote. I don't have a vote. But because I'm also a military dependent, whose dad served four tours of duty in Vietnam, who was from a very dysfunctional childhood because of that, what I see is the benefit of this is for the children. And the number of children we have in Hope Mills, and the number of active-duty military that come here because of what we have here, we only benefit those that actually are making Hope Mills their home. So I too am strongly in favor of this. And I too believe that they're willing to purchase and pay whatever they need to pay. The first offer on the table was like anything you do. If you go buy something, you're going to give them the, hopefully, the lowest offer they'll take, expecting them to come back with a bigger offer. And that's what exactly was presented to our board. The anticipation was, yes, they're going to want more money. And yes, this is an area, if you go down there and look, there's lift station from PWC. There's a sewage line. There's electric easements. There's the flood plain. And there's then, you get down to a little clearing, which is about the three and a half acres that you can build on. And then there's the creek. And if you look across that creek, you see Calico Fire Department. It's very remote, it's very isolated, and it affects no one, except of course, the firemen might see them through the woods. So that's my spiel. I do not understand why this board would not embrace this organization and what it would mean to our town.
Madam Mayor? I also support this group wholeheartedly. I think what you want to do should be commended for. I'm not going to use the word "but," I'm going to use the word "however." This land is very valuable to everyone, not just the town of Hope Mills and Parks and Recreation, but to the military. I think that if it was going anywhere else besides the lake bed number two, I would be the first to make a motion, let's do it. But, I used the word "but." Anyway, I think I was called a coward because I was hiding behind closed session. I didn't call that closed session. I didn't know what was on it when I went there. So I definitely wasn't hiding behind a closed session. If you guys find another place that we can help you with, I'd be more than happy to jump on because I want to thank each and every one of you for what you've done for this country and what you continue to do for this country. And I'd like to see you be successful in finding a place that's suitable for your organization. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I'd like to-
Okay.
If nobody else is gonna take a turn, I'd like to say that we have given land before. We gave, we gave land to V F W, and we have leased land. And it belongs to Hope Mills, and that, we leased land to Big T. So we have given land, and we have leased land.
Madam Mayor.
Yes?
Everyone on this board supports, supports the military. My son's about to go into it next month, so obviously, nothing more dear to my heart at this point would be him. But my job as a commissioner is to protect the assets of Hope Mills, and that's what we were elected for. We would support this foundation anywhere but Lake Number Two. I honestly believe that. I know that the mayor spoke of a letter that was received on, about this study from nineteen ninety-nine. In two thousand fourteen, P W C put an application in for water at Jordan Lake and cited, excluding the Cape Fear River, Rockfish Creek, and the Little River were the only other local surface water sources identified to have sufficient drought flow to support a proposed reservoir. However, it was found that the Little River would be only marginally adequate in supporting the proposed reservoir, and the excessive drawdown of the reservoir water level could occur during periods of severe drought, peak water demands. Alternatively, a reservoir located on Rockfish Creek would be capable of providing a raw water supply of nine M G D. The most favorable location for a proposed reservoir was found to be the town of Hope Mills near the confluence of Little Rockfish Creek and Rockfish Creek. I'm not willing to give that water source away with the issues that we're seeing across Cumberland County and the surrounding areas. It's certainly nothing against the foundation. We wholeheartedly support it. And we would do our very best to help locate another location. But this is one that I just could not support this location, and it has nothing to do with the foundation.
May I ask, when they say that they would revert the land back to us if that water source was to happen? According to P W C, there's no plans for twenty fifty. And my understanding was y'all said that if it were to come back as a lake, then you would be more than happy to, um, give it back to the town.
We could do an option where we could give it back to the, or the county could buy back from us. But we, well, I mean, if, if having a water source is, is holding you up on, then this, acquire the property. If we buy nineteen acres of land for thirty-eight thousand dollars, which is what our offer was, not twenty-eight, twenty-eight acres. We faced our offer on seven thousand dollars a acre for the usable property, and a minimum amount for all the property within the flood plain. Half of this property is on the other side of the creek. We don't even have access to it. And we probably would never be able to get a bridge built to use the other half of the property. So, we just weren't happy to just buy everything on one side of the creek. And if y'all put a dam in, that just enhances our property. There's nothing that we're gonna do on this property that's gonna stop this from being a water source if you choose to build, have a water source in the future.
The, uh, the property owner on the other side of the lake is actually asked why he wasn't approached.
The property that they're talking about is all town property. The whole piece of property is town property. There's not any one other, any other owner. It's all town property.
It's all, it's all along about the same. I have a map if you'd like to see one.
Pardon me?
Have a map of the property if you'd like to see it to confirm what Jackie and he said.
No, I'm fine, thank you.
Okay.
And where it's located is at the, the end of where the, uh, if the dam was put back up at the other end, what would happen would be where they're located, where they're asking for property, would be where, um, possibly it would, there's, might become lakefront. But there's flood plain there, and there's also environmental issues in the other section that you can't build on. And of course, the sewer line, the electrical easement, and the lift station. All of those impact that corner of the property.
If, where we're gonna put the facility is up above those sewer lines and easements, I would think that if you ever put a lake there, you're not gonna want the sewer underneath the lake, and you're not gonna want the utility easement, or the power lines running through there underneath the lake either. So, the logical position for a lake would be to make the dam low enough so that all of this property that you, your sewer easement and utility easement would have to be above the water line on the dam. And we're gonna be even above that property.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'm only a few minutes on my comments. Terry, thank you. Thank you for what you do for our nation's veterans and their families. Thanks for all the folks that have come here tonight from Lone Survivor. It's a heck of an organization that truly gives back to every community and every veteran and their family members. In many ways, that's never known. Twenty-two suicides a day is totally unrepresented. But I think we've got a lot of bad press, Terry. I agree with you. I think there's been bad press over the past two or three months. And now, and I'm not gonna go point your fingers at anybody. I'm just gonna tell you. I'm just gonna shoot from the hip. I'm a son of a veteran too. My father's a Navy veteran, served on Carolina. I'm proud and I'm honored to have served our great nation for twenty-six years. I'm proud and I'm honored to have been elected the State Commander of the Veterans of Foreign Wars of this great state to represent our veterans. And two of my advisors are sitting right back there, and one of them's Roland Rochester, and the other one's Bill Green, who serves me well and has continued to serve me well in that capacity. And I'm proud and I'm honored to be elected official for the town of Hope Mills. As I slowly work into this job, since something, I'm not a politician, so it wasn't something I signed up for, but as somebody told me once before, years ago, as a young soldier, it'll cut into you. Yeah, twenty-six years in military definitely will cut into you. Now, what I think some of the bad press here is why this board voted the way they did. Because there's been a lot of rumors, a lot of speculation, a lot of back and forth. Chaplain, don't, don't look at me harmful, but I'm gonna say something that I think this entire project was presented ass-backwards. Thank you, Bill. Told you I'd say it. I did. I really do, Terry. I think it was presented ass-backwards. Totally, out of the gate. I really do. Because it created a lot of false hope, a lot of if and and, and slam dunk, and everybody will go along with it and all this kind of stuff. It went all that. In this position, I serve the veterans, I serve active, retired, like myself, their family members, and every citizen in Hope Mills, whether they voted for me or not. I serve in this position for everybody. These are tough decisions that sometimes are not popular decisions. And I make decisions, I'm gonna speak for myself, because I'm gonna tell you why I, I voted the way I did. I make decisions just like I did in the military for twenty-six years and just like I did when I served as State Commander of the V F W. I make decisions based on the information that's presented to me at the time I have to make it. I did that quite well on the battlefield, and it's served me all my life. But now, if the information's wrong, or incomplete, or incorrect, then I made a decision based on what I had at that time. There's a number of commanders right now, as you sit in this room, that are on point, downrange, making decisions that we can sit here and discuss on the information they got. God bless them. When this was first approached to us, and it was back in June, seemed like everybody around the county knew about it besides this board. Terry, you gave a nice presentation on my campus where I work in F T C C. It was a nice, it was really nice. I just wasn't there that day. But I got to see the video, and I got to hear about it. And I said, "Well, doggone, this sounds like he's talking about Hope Mills." This was back in April. And we didn't learn about this thing until June. And there'd been a lot of work done already on this property before we even learned about it. Didn't they, didn't, didn't have any idea you guys were looking for this. Now, I will tell you, I support this project and have for all, for a number of years because I remember, Terry, when you guys were coming to Linden. Up there on that horse park, remember that? Horses that heal. It was a huge opportunity for our veterans and families. That's when I served as State Commander of V F W. All V S Os, V F W, uh, American Legion, D A V, were all in support of your project. Just like years ago, we were all in support of the last big community project that came to Fayetteville, and that was the Jubilee House. And there may be some of you in this room that worked out there in the July heat, like my wife and I, and I think Meg Larson did too. We started that project, and we ended it. And we did it all with volunteers. And it was one heck of a project, and it was all for homeless veterans. I look at this project the same way, Terry. This is a huge project. So, we had the reservoir issue that came up. We had two studies. I got both of them right here. I got a whole file of stuff here. Anybody wants to look at it? I ain't hiding nothing. There's two studies. One of them was nineteen ninety-nine about the importance of that reservoir out there called Hope Mills Lake Number Two. Now, no, bear in mind, I'm not from Hope Mills, wasn't born and raised here. I'm just a retired soldier out of Bragg, born and raised and on a farm out of Western Virginia. I'm an old country boy. And I, and I've learned along the way that there's, there used to be five lakes in Hope Mills, and they are all sacred lakes of this community from the mill workers. The history, a lot of history that go behind this property. That's not just for me. That's what I learned. And Lake Number Two was a very, very valuable resource that in two thousand fourteen, there was a Lake Jordan Water application filed on its behalf. Now, this is what I had now. I didn't have this memo or email that the mayor's talking about. We didn't have any of that on June eighteenth, or June fourth, or any other closed session meeting we met. We didn't have that. No knowledge of it. So I'm going on two reports, one nineteen ninety-nine and one, another one, twenty fourteen, talking about the importance of that reservoir site for future water sources for Cumberland County. And in the backdrop, for the past, what, two years now, what have we been hearing out at Grace Creek? Starts with a G, ends with an X. Now, I can't make a decision sitting here as a veteran. Because if I did, Terry, I'd bite myself and give it to you. I'd work it. I say that, sir, out of honesty because I've done it. And I know at least two other guys in here that would be with me. I don't know how many others, but I know two. So that, that report is what we had as one challenge to the, to your location, was that report of the future water reservoir and the benefit that it would have for all of Cumberland County and the surrounding areas of Cumberland County. Was that important. It's all right here. That was one. Two. In our twenty thirty plan, we've got that designated as a Parks and Recreational Opportunity, which is a wonderful, wonderful location. There used to be a park, so I'm told, on that little property, that one acre property that you guys are looking at. It used to be a nice park there a long, long time ago. Real nice one, beside the gate, the gated fence. And I looked at the opportunity, that would be such a nice opportunity to restore that area for Parks and Rec. Could it, could it be used in a partnership between the town and Lone Survivor? Could it be? Could it be? Don't know. The citizens of this town has ponied up, what, I think we're at seventy-five thousand dollars for a Parks and Rec Comprehensive study from McAdams Group that we're waiting for the results of in September. That's reason number two. Is that we've, we've paid this group to look at all of our Parks and Rec before this, before this came out. Now, I'm trying to explain to you on June eighteenth, before this decision was made. So there's two things that are happening before we heard, before we made a decision with this. You had that. And that's coming back in September. I, we don't know what that's gonna look like. It could look like we could use it as a Parks and Rec. It may not. Because we've also got the golf course included as well. There was another thing. There's been no appraisal of that property at all. I mean, I, that, that goes to number three. No appraisal. Heck, the deed wasn't even researched about this property when we first heard about it. And the deed wasn't researched, there's been no appraisal of the property. I know what your generous offer is. I tru- I truly do. I don't know if it's, if you're high, low, if, I don't know. Nothing done there. Nothing at all with the offer. That was, that's reason number three. And reason number four, I said in the beginning, this whole thing was presented ass-backwards. I don't like stuff like this. I don't. I truly don't. I ain't gonna sit here and point any fingers. That I think if you'd have showed up here, Terry, and, and presented this out of the gate like you did tonight, and let us do our research and find out exactly, is this gonna fit? Because even in the slide, in your slides, there, there was, there was something that gave me pause. And it was on slide number two. "The engineering firm has recommended additional environmental work research, and the client, which is you, has expressed interest in the next steps of the site development of the site." There was an old mill down there at one time, and nobody really knows, at least I don't know, maybe some of the older folks that are still around Hope Mills probably know, what was left over from that old mill site. Heck, the ground may be contaminated where it can't be used for Parks and Rec, your company or anybody else. And maybe that's why it's been sitting there undeveloped for, uh, I don't know, forty-some years. I don't know. That's speculation, Terry. But that gave me pause too when I, when I looked at this. And it was like, well, I would surely hate to see you invest two million dollars in a piece of property that's just not gonna work. Pretty much probably what happened in Linden with that deal. I have a lot of veterans that continue to ask me, they thought you guys were in Linden. And I said, "No, that, they didn't go to Linden. Now they're trying to come to Hope Mills, and I'm glad you are coming to Hope Mills." It just, I don't know if this is the right property, and it's for a lot of reasons. It has nothing, and I mean nothing, to do with your organization. I'd have, I'd feel the very same way if it was some, any organization that wanted to look at that property. Now, there's another reason too, is that this came to just the board, and it came in closed session. I don't like either one. I like transparency, and I like everything done in front of the public. That's who I am. That's, I think that's why I was elected to sit in this seat. And I think before any decisions made by this board, there has to be a public hearing so everybody has the opportunity to express their concerns. But you can't have a public hearing if you don't have honesty, truth, and the total real facts. If you don't have all that and you hide behind cloaks of secrecy, well, then that's where decisions go wrong. Rumors start, misinformation. And, and above all, Terry, bad press. And I don't wanna see any, any bad press towards your organization.
Can I remind, can I remind you before you go any further that, first of all, Commissioner Legg was not in attendance at that meeting, so it was a three to one vote? And also, you cannot vote in closed session, so.
Didn't vote, didn't, didn't say a vote.
That's why I'm saying, if you haven't.
I was at that first meeting.
Not this, the one they voted. And if there's, and if there is a vote, which I wish you would quit saying, there, if there was no vote in closed session, it has to be voted on in the public.
Okay, then I'll say consensus, Mayor.
But what has said, been said is that you voted, and that it was a four to one vote, but it was a three to one vote because Commissioner Legg was not in attendance at that meeting. And I ask again for this to be brought forward to this community and for this to be voted on in public. If you wanted to vote four to one, three to one, whatever you wanted to vote, I ask for it to come forward because as mayor, and knowing closed session rules, for you to act, any kind of action, you have to come out and you have to do the action in, in the open.
That's correct.
And so what has happened is, you've sent forth a message that you voted against this, and you did this in, in closed session.
We took a census.
It doesn't matter, that's a vote. You called it a vote.
I just told the truth, Mayor. I told the truth. And I get a little offended by the interruption, Mayor, but I'm gonna excuse it just once. And I'm, and here's why. I'm trying to, to tell the company what actions occurred and why. I think that's what you wanna know. Here we are tonight on the twenty-third of July. This decision was made on June eighteenth. This didn't happen last week, didn't happen last night, didn't happen two weeks ago. It happened on June eighteenth, and it happened in closed session with the information I just told you. Now, the last two days, we've gotten a new email from PWC that changed, that, I don't know, is it a game changer for the, for the reservoir location? Just got that. I don't know who this person is, all of a sudden, the email just arrived. Would've been nice to know that prior to June eighteenth, I think. But this is what I'm trying to tell you about. Is why, why the decisions were made. And the board, and the board decided not to move in that direction, and they decided on the information that was presented to us on June eighteenth. That's what I wanted you to know, Terry.
Man, if I could, um, I'm just gonna lay it out. Everybody knew about this deal except for these five commissioners. Uh, the mayor's son presented the presentation in closed session. Had utmost respect for Teddy Warner, but, uh, obviously discussed the matter with the mayor. They also had discussions with our town manager and our town attorney. And our board should've been instructed from the very start that, hey, if somebody interested in a piece of property you guys have, are you even interested in selling it? But what happened was we got called in closed session, didn't have a clue what was going on, and there was an hour and a half presentation back there. This is nothing against Lone Survivor, it has everything to do with our team up here at Hope Mills that seems to be dysfunctional at this point. And I'm embarrassed by it, um, it's not what we're about. But I, I'll make a motion right now that, um, we do not accept the proposal at this time.
Ladies and gentlemen, we want to hear from the people to sign up to speak.
Yeah, you've got a long list to speak or something.
Public comments, or?
Yeah.
We've read it before, we just wanted to hear from our people.
This isn't a public hearing, though.
This is a presentation.
It's a presentation. We have public comments in the meeting.
Yeah, public comments coming in.
Then I, then, Madam Mayor. Yes, sir.
If I may always suggest, the public comments, I noticed there's a lot of people who want to talk on this particular subject. As a point of order, you could bring it up and the board could agree to have the public comments prior to any other action of the board.
Okay, at this time, I would like to have the public comments brought up, uh, prior to any action of the board.
I don't, I don't wanna have that right now. We have a motion on the floor that's, we gotta resolve before we do anything else.
I'd like to make, Mayor Warner, I'd like to make a comment.
Okay.
Since we haven't voted on the motion. Um, I don't have a lot of accolades or anything like that, but I do know Hope Mills, I knew, I do know the people Hope Mills. And you're all taxpayers, and this property belongs to the taxpayers, not just the town. You are, you are the taxpayers. And I know we were elected by y'all. But I, you know, it's, it's just not, it's just not right. And as far as the closed sessions, um, and he mentioned the town manager, and Mayor Warner, and economic development being there in closed session, before they do anything with property, it goes through economic development. That's before we know what's going on. They do all the research, like some of them got upset because they'd gone out and they tested the land or something like that. That's what they do before it comes to us. That's part of economic development. And I just feel it's up to the people.
Ma'am, may I take this opportunity to, to second, uh, Mr. Mitchell's motion? And I agree with Ms. Edwards, this land belongs to the citizens of the town. And I would be willing to put this on a ballot at an upcoming election and let the people decide if it's possible.
That's not possible.
I don't think you can do that.
That, that's not. But I would, I, I would ask that, based on my knowledge, how many people in here are against this project? If you will, raise your hand if you are against this project.
Excuse me, Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I think the wording of that is totally.
Well, give me the right word, give me the right word.
Who in this room is against the project being put onto Lake Croftie Number Two?
Okay, well, and, and.
I think everybody, everybody in this room represents, thinks that, uh, this organization is an external.
Okay, well, Lake Number Two, because we know right now that Lake Number Two, in order for it to be put back, we would have to put the dam back. So that's one side of it. So I'll take that off the table, but I do believe that the number of people that have come to this meeting tonight need to be heard. And if there are those that did not sign up because you did not wanna sign up because you were not in favor of this on Hope Mills Lake Number Two, I open the opportunity at this time for you to add your name to the list. Because I do believe that's important.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I agree. These citizens are here, we're in the public, and they wanna speak. Allow them. Allow all of them. Allow everyone in here that wants to speak either for or against this project.
I'll withdraw my second.
Allow it.
Thank you.
That's what's wrong now. We did everything, and we'll say it again, Bill, I asked backwards.
Can I comment just to you about the process, because I heard this, this again, clarification of where we're coming from?
Good, sir.
Yes, we were in Linden, and we were gonna do a facility in Linden. However, the soil was not suitable. We could not build it, couldn't hold the septic tanks. It couldn't hold the five thousand water gallons that we needed for the sprinkler systems that were in there. So we started looking elsewhere. As we started looking elsewhere, I started talking to people that had nothing to do with the Business Economic Development Committee or anything. I talked with people like Jack Ross that are over at H and H Homes, asking him if he knew places where there were lands. Well, that turned out, Jack at the time was the chairman of the Business Economic Development Committee. He was about to go over and he said, okay, let me introduce you to Andrew. We went through the Business Economic Development Committee, looking at multiple properties. This was not the only property we looked at with that group. When we saw this property and fell in love with it, my first reaction was, if anybody has lived in Houston, Texas, have you ever heard of a place called M.D. Anderson Cancer Center? The story of M.D. Anderson is, M.D. Anderson came about because of a textile mill. There was a textile mill in upstate New York that polluted the ground and people became infected and got cancer. And a bunch of researchers up in upstate New York started to do their research, and they did testing on rats and labs and everything, and the medical board of the state of New York shut down their research. And they moved to Houston, Texas. And that was the start of M.D. Anderson Cancer Center, the biggest cancer center in the world today, and the treatment of it. When I went on that property and heard that there was a mill there, I said, what do we have to do to make sure that property is clear?
Yeah.
Okay? We were not trying to circumvent anybody or anything. We were strictly saying, if this is a property that is even worth us looking at, we need to find out, number one, is it contaminated?
I agree with you.
We were willing to, because we looked into it to the point of, we found out what was involved and cleaned it up. We were prepared to do that, if that's what it would take, but we needed to know, and you needed to know.
Yeah.
Because how could you come and ask you to transfer something like that without that kind of a study being proposed? Well, when we went to the people to do the study, they said, well, there's, there's time considerations and dollar considerations where if the current owner will do the study instead of you, it can be expedited and it won't cost as much money to do. And that's when we said, well, let's put that into all of this conversation. But be clear, we were never trying to circumvent anybody. We were following the process that we believed was what we should've been doing. We were presenting to whoever was willing to listen, we had a property that we saw, and again, it's very easy to say anywhere else. We have been looking for a year for a property to find, and I'm telling you, the environment is critical to these retreats. And you just don't find twenty acres here or ten acres there that fits. There is a very rare property, and this was one of them. But again, I wanna be real clear, we weren't playing games with anybody, because we don't play games. All we do is care about the veterans and their families, and that's all we do. And I'll say it again, all we care about is never quitting on those that never quit on us. So thank you.
Thank you.
My husband and I are, he's from Houston, Texas. This man is telling the truth about Houston, Texas, come here. I'm almost fifty years old. If people don't plan to fail, they fail to plan. I am born here in Cumberland County, and this board needs to go ahead and make a change at this point. Happy you guys won't be here after they go and they do what they're supposed to do. You gotta let these children, you know, vibe and have some type of surrender, some ground, some root to do the right thing, and that's all I have to say. God bless you, Mayor.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, we'll start at this time with public, public comments, and I'll remind you that public comments, you are to identify yourself, and each person has three minutes in order to speak. So we'll start with the first that is signed up, and that is Kyle Yarborough.
Alright, my name's Kyle Yarborough, from Smithfield. Uh, do not work for Lone Survivor Foundation. Uh, I was an attendee for one of their retreats. Uh, and I want to, to quickly hit on the retreat and, and how important it is, you speak of value at golf courses. Uh, I wanna tell you what's more valuable than that, and, uh, that's the fact that I'm still standing here, and that it's all due to Lone Survivor Foundation. I'm gonna tell you something that I've not spoke about, uh, in public. And that's that for fourteen years, every day I woke up and the hardest thing I'd done was not kill myself. The hardest thing I'd done was live, and I'd done that for fourteen years. Uh, went through two marriages, uh, lost half my family 'cause they couldn't deal with me. Uh, and, and my second marriage was coming to an end, and someone reached out to me from the Lone Survivor Foundation and said, you need to check these people out, they're real. They're pretty cool. So I went to a foundation, um, went to, is it Crystal Lake, Texas? Crystal Beach, Texas. Um, a few months back, coolest thing I've ever done. Uh, I've met people that I still text on a daily basis, we still email, uh, we've become instant best friends, that's what you do in the military. Well, since I left, uh, my wife's seen a change in me, my family's seen a change in me, my nieces have seen a change in me. I haven't thought about suicide once since then until bringing it up in front of you guys. My marriage is back on track. I'm back at work, I finally got a job after being unemployed for three years, 'cause I couldn't work due to anxiety, stress, PTSD. I understand that the land is valuable. I understand that Parks and Recs wants to use it. But what's more valuable than human life? And the fact that building that retreat saves lives. And there's thousands out there that are worse off than I am, and they need to be saved. And they're not gonna be saved if we cannot build this retreat. My sergeant, uh, that was with me in Iraq, which I wanna get to a Lone Survivor retreat, he made that. That's how he deals with his PTSD. Uh, he makes them, they're handmade, uh, beautiful. He wants to go to a retreat, he can't. His PTSD is too bad that he can't board an airplane. He couldn't even come in this room right now. That's why we need local retreats. And if Terry says that that's the right spot, that's the right spot. We're gonna be saving lives, I promise you. That's it.
Thank you, sir. Next, we have, um, Lindsay Knapp.
My name's Lindsay Knapp. I also attended the retreat, um, I'm a veteran, I'm a mother, I, uh, I work on Fort Bragg as a victim advocate. So I work with, um, soldiers and family members who have been, who've experienced sexual assault or domestic violence. This, um, I attended the retreat, uh, along with my brother, um, and it's, it's for everyone, and it's for the whole family. If, if you guys are on the fence about this being a recreation or place for families, my question is when? The Lone Survivor will do that today. They will do that today, and they will do it at no cost to you. They will do it at no cost to you. They can provide that resource that you wanna provide, your citizens, today. They can save people like myself, like my brother, and then all the soldiers that I see day in and day out. They don't want a TRICARE resource, they don't wanna go to the VA. They want something off the books. And the Lone Survivor will give that to them. They will provide them all the mental health care that they need in that weekend, and then they're gonna set them up with providers when they leave. They're not just sending them out into the universe. They're like, where are you from? Oh, we flew you in for free from wherever you're at. And then they're gonna send, they sent me back here to North Carolina, they're like, oh, you know what, I got somebody for you there. They're already linked into this community. They're linked into this community because of people like me, because people like Morgan, because people like Terry, because people like Kyle, and everybody else that's sitting back here. They're linked in. So of course, the whole community knew about it before you guys did. Because they are linked in. They know the veterans. They know who needs the help, and that's who they are helping every day. That's all I got. Thank you.
Next, we have Bill Spake.
Good evening, and thank you for not allowing me to talk beyond my three minutes the other week. I think part of that probably precipitated what's happened since then, not because of me, but because of Lone Survivor and what they do. I'm hoping that the board, Jesse said it very well, gone at best, I quote, some of the objections that I've heard tonight, I think have been dispelled. The issue of water source, PWC said, uh-uh. Again, I asked one, two, three, four of the commissioners if you'd like to have a vote to tax the people for ten, twelve billion dollars to build a lake which we don't need. PWC's not gonna do it. The issue of Parks and Recs, love Parks and Recs. I used to be on the Parks and Recs Commission, among others, in Hope Mills. You will know, 'cause we served with the zoning board. Anyway, I hope tonight that some of the reasons for dismissing this proposal, I hope they've been brought, and thank you for allowing this group to speak. The question was, would you vote to remove them from the, from the agenda? Smartest thing you've done, 'cause remember, these people do vote after Because remember, these people do vote after this decision is going to be made. But Parks and Recs, absolutely. I'm all for Parks and Recs and for the kids. As a veteran myself, I think it's pretty obvious, that this small microcosm of property and Hope Mills is far greater than any, any little park. In perpetuity, these people are willing to pay, they're willing to revert the property to the town. Is that not correct, Terry? If it doesn't work out, they're willing to do anything they can to make this work. So, please, back off. Jesse, you spoke very well, God bless you.
Thanks, sir.
That, because you made the decision of what you had. You have other information tonight. Yes, Parks and Recs, don't let that be the sole reason. Don't let the sole reason be, I see forty-six seconds, don't let the sole reason be, oh, we need a water source. That's a moot point. Please, listen to the people of Hope Mills. Listen to them tonight, listen to them if it's brought again, because are you people going to remember this to the next election? Thank you. Twenty-six seconds.
Tim Byram.
My name is Tim Byram, and I'm board president for the Lone Survivor Foundation. My purpose of being here is financial. I represent the board, and I'm telling you that whatever this board decides as far as negotiating a price on this, we're willing to work with you on it. We based our price, we were asked to make an offer on this property. A lease offer as well as a purchase offer. We submitted an offer. We got a letter yesterday from the June fourth meeting we had. We got a letter in our office yesterday and saying that y'all were not interested in doing the deal on this property. That's the first communication that we've gotten since our meeting on June fourth. We've been waiting ever since that meeting and ever since we made our offer for y'all to come back with a counter offer on this property. It was for sale, I mean, we did talk about buying it. There was no deal made before we went into that executive session. We did what you asked us to do, and we haven't heard anything back from you on a counter offer. All we know is that when we left that meeting, we were approached by several council members here tonight and told us that this was a deal that y'all wanted, and y'all were going to make it work. And then mysteriously, it went south, and we just now found out about a week ago that y'all weren't interested in the deal. The water excuse, it's not an excuse. We would welcome a lake there. Should you ever decide to build a lake, it would enhance our property too. It would make the healing process for our soldiers even better. Y'all did take a vote, but that's not the only vote y'all can take. You can rescind your vote, you can do another offer, we can negotiate a deal, and I'll say, in North Carolina, as long as it takes to negotiate a deal with your people. Just because you voted once doesn't mean you can't rescind that vote and start over. You've got all the information you need right now. You may not have had it before, but that's why we're here tonight.
Yeah.
You've got everything you need. We would love to be in Hope Mills, I love the name. It goes right along with what we do. But if y'all don't want us here, we'll certainly find someplace else to go. But this is our first choice, after a year of looking at over fifty properties. This is the best place for this facility in Cumberland County. But if y'all don't want us here, we'll be glad to move on. But I'd just like to, to know why. And a water resource is not an excuse. A park is not an excuse. You've got sixty acres of land there. Of the nineteen acres that we were looking at, over half of it's on the other side of the creek we can't even get to. We don't need that. But we based our price at seven thousand dollars an acre for the usable property, and a minimum price for the property that was under the flood plain that was not usable. But it was a first time offer, I'm in real estate business, been in it all my life. We made an offer, we were looking for a counter offer, and we'd be more than happy to negotiate with this board. All you have to do is say that you're willing to talk to us and try to work something out, and we'll work with you. But like I said, if y'all don't want us here, we'll be glad to leave. But we will be in Cumberland County. It's up to you to decide whether you want it here or somebody else gets it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Rod McLean.
Rod McLean, fifty-four, thirty-five Fountain Lane. And yes, I do come from Hope Mills, as you are well aware. I am in actuality the just-elected leader of project lead for Project Healing Waters Fire Fishing in Fayetteville and Fort Bragg. We also serve the wounded veterans. Chris Hall just did a very good healing on the waters at the lake. He works with wounded veterans. I know that there are, there is a wounded warrior chapter here in Fayetteville. They do work with it. Yes, they suffered a little bit recently, but they do work with wounded warriors. There is nobody in this community, I do not believe, that has anything against any organization that works with wounded veterans. Having said that, I'm going to run through a short list, and if it makes you cringe, cringe. Walmart, Elk Road, Plank Road, Mulder Street. If you don't remember those particular incidences and don't think about them very hard, then you should not be sitting up there as the board of commissioners and the mayor. Walmart was an operation that was done in so much darkness that flashlights weren't even legal in Hope Mills. Mulder Road, there's an error on Mulder Road that has just come up and has been fixed. Plank Road, every single one of you up there knows that we gave away that land illegally. No questions, it was illegal. And now we hear that the Lone Survivor Foundation, and yes, I agree with you, you are a great organization, and this has nothing, nothing to do with you. This town does it, and I think Mr. Bellflower's put it about right, ass backwards. Nobody, everybody in this town is hearing a little bit here, a little bit there, something else somewhere else. This group knew about it, that group knew about it. Why all of a sudden is Walmart in blazing red colors all over every wall? Is this not Walmart again? Can we afford a Walmart again? We had Walmart, we lost our town attorney, we lost our town manager. I do not think that we can go through losing another town attorney or another town manager. It is time that this board look at what has to happen, bring it out into the open, and hold a full, a full public hearing on it. You cannot make a vote based on what happened here tonight. You have to stop, go through every piece of information that you have got and have since, the quote, discovered, then hold a proper public hearing before a vote is made. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well said, Rod. Well said.
Next, we have Anne Marie Locklear.
Well said.
I thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm here tonight on behalf of Lone Survivor. Ladies and gentlemen, and I appreciate the opportunity as the general contractor. My name is Anne Marie St. George Locklear. I was raised in this community. I graduated from South Houston High, and this community means a tremendous amount to me. And I took on this project not because I needed to build something else, but because I believed in what my father had served so many years in the United States Military for, what I've seen my father suffer through, what I've heard many tonight speak on. And I stand here proud to be part of this project, and proud to have walked that land off, not with any undercover operation, just looking at many properties. And when I was brought on with the property you speak of in Linden, sir, with that lake, I walked that property off and quickly understood we could not build on that property. It was very generous for someone to give it, however, it could not be developed. So, I come to you tonight to say, this is a tremendous asset to Hope Mills if you look at it from an economic standpoint. Look what it brings to the community beyond what you give the soldiers. You will, for the next year, generate jobs for construction workers. You will generate jobs for years to come for healthcare providers. You will generate a facility that is not only locally known, statewide known, nationally known, but internationally known, known rather, excuse me. This is a tremendous asset to this community, and I agree wholeheartedly with you, sir, that it needs to be reevaluated, and the opportunity for more discussion to be given to this community for what they're about to lose. And that's all I have to say, and I thank you for the moment to speak.
Thank you, ma'am.
Alexandra, and I don't know how, I'm afraid I'm going to mess up your last name. Okay.
So, you'll have to ignore the, the blue hair, because that's just me. But my name is Alexandra Lemieux. I'm actually living in Rayford currently. I moved out to Rayford a little over a year ago. I was living right in Hope Mills off of Crystal Springs Road, and the building of this foundation means so much to me. I had a grandfather at seventy-six years old have a boating accident, but we all know that it wasn't an accident. And with a project like this being available to veterans now, instead of, no offense, Parks and Recreation, it'll be a tremendous, tremendous attribute. Because without something like this, your Parks and Recreation that would be built, you're going to have people not attending, like grandfathers and fathers, because either A, they physically can't be there because they can't go out, or B, they just can't go there because they're off trying to have a pony accident or whatever. I wrote, I wrote something completely different. But it doesn't mean as much if I'm reading it off the fishing paper for you guys because it's not, you're not going to understand. I'm not trying to say anything bad against your town board because I understand where each and every one of you are coming from. I've been to the wonderful Parks and Recreation off of Ramsey Street. My niece plays soccer out there, beautiful, and I would love for you guys to develop more for things for children. But is it going to mean anything if they can't have somebody they love there with them? I think I'm done.
Thank you. Robert Van Gans.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. I apologize, my comments are in the process over, process overall, but it feels like that would be the appropriate time as it relates to the project. And, you know, again, Robert Van Gans, Fable Cumberland Economic Development Corporation, and, and we are the ones that did make the initial introduction between the project and the town. If I may, I'd just like to clarify for the public, maybe, a little bit about the process, how we brought it to the town. After the previous search did not work out, we were asked to help Lone, Lone Survivor Foundation find a site, and we did, we looked at a number of sites. But in all sincerity, in all honesty, one stood out here. And, and we thought that it would, honestly, we thought it would be a good fit. And, but we did, we advised Lone Survivor Foundation, especially considering what they'd gone through in Linden, that we needed to have our ducks in a row, and we should do due diligence beforehand. And we did, we got out there, we did a phase one, we contacted the town, we walked the site, and we, we tried getting the basic information to find out, is it even feasible to come to you with? Because it's not worth wasting anybody's time on a project that they can't be built. So, with that said, once we found that out, we did. We, we asked for a closed hearing so we could make that introduction to the entire town board of commissioners at once. And, you know, how we got from that point to today, I'm sure there's a lot of conversations we can have about that, but that is not something, you know, it's surely a complicated one. But for the public, there's a reason for a closed session. It, it's for the commissioners to receive information at an initial stage, so we can start a conversation. And we will be back before this board with job creating projects. And it, and it has to at times start in confidence. But here's the thing for everybody to take away, and this is for the public, even though I'm looking up at, at you here. Any, before any land is sold, before any incentive is given, before any grant is executed, it has to come back here, and it will come back here for a public hearing. My team wouldn't stand for that, your staff wouldn't, and I know, I believe each and every one of you, any decision that is going to be made that is binding would come back to this full board. And, you know, three minutes is a tough time when you're as verbose as I, as I am. But I just wanted to really share with you that we brought this to town, and we thought that it was a good way to go because it's the way we do all our projects. And if it wasn't, I own that. I take that on the chin. It's a process we use, and it's a process at times we have to use. But for everyone, at times, what we talk about must remain confidential. But that's a small piece of what we do. So, I encourage anyone who has any questions, I will share with you everything I legally can. So, pick up the phone, send a text, fire off a tweet. If it's all right with you, I'd like to leave a stack of my cards with the town clerk. And again, I feel like I'm talking to you, but I'm actually talking behind me for anybody with any questions about what we do with economic development. Our intent wasn't to divide this board. Our intent wasn't to force this project on you. In all sincerity, we really felt this was going to be a good fit on that site, and we wanted to initiate a conversation. So, whether we do this project today or do something tomorrow, we'll do the best we can to support you and your economic development goals because working together, we want to bring economic opportunity to this town.
And would you clarify my son's responsibility with your organization?
Teddy Warner is my business development manager, and he's charged with my site identification and development program. As such, he is the first person to look at matching sites with potential projects.
Do you view that as a conflict of interest to send him in closed session with his mother as the mayor?
Uh, quite.
Do you consider that a conflict of interest?
Quite frankly, we brought this before you, and honestly, I'll, I'll tell you the hundred percent God's honest truth here. This is a great project. There was a site that we had done some initial looking at, that we knew the town had done with. We thought we were bringing a very positive thing, again, to start a conversation with, where you could ask questions and give us guidance. No, you don't fund our organization. We work for, you know, the county does. And, and we honestly, just as if someone I knew closely was on another town council, we'd bring them a project, because this is an opportunity for you to consider, for you to decide how to take it and whether or not you want to take it forward. It was, just honestly, I think Teddy was very excited, there was a great opportunity in his hometown, and wanted to bring it to you. Anything other than that would be, well, that's just the facts as they, as they lay. Any other questions, I'm more than happy to answer them. I'd love to. If there's questions afterwards, please, I'll be available today or anytime. Thank you.
Alex Warner.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. My name's Alex Warner. I live at four thirty-three Legion Road here in Hope Mills, and I have, for as long as this young lady's granddaddy, served in seventy-six years. Four years, four, four miles from where I was born. And I, I confess, I do have a conflict of interest because I sleep with the mayor every night. I'm sorry. I'm surprised, I'm surprised, I'm surprised at some of you board members. When you turn around and you ask questions that are punitive. You know, for example, when you, I didn't call any names. Example, when you ask if my son and my wife had negotiated this thing before it was brought to Hope Mills. Of course I'd ask, of course I'd ask. She's the mayor of the town. This is the economic development module, if you will, for Cumberland County, not only Cumberland County, but the whole region for economic development. It's for Cumberland County, and this is one, one place in, second place in America that we can at least thank our military for all the lives and legals that they've given for us. Now, Jesse, I'm not going to take a full three minutes, I don't need to, Jackie, and this is another Now, Jesse, I'm not gonna take a full three minutes, I don't need to Jackie, and this is another reason why you won't let me come to these meetings. I know that, I'm, I'm a little volatile because I used to be a Democrat and I changed to another party, which I'm very satisfied with. And uh, that, that tired, that tired of politicians saying one thing and going out and saluting fire trucks and saluting our military and our, our, our leaders of the town that put their lives on the, on the line every day. I get tired of seeing that when it's a hypocritical presentation. If you got your heart in it, you do what's supposed to be right. My dad used to tell me that. He said, it might be unpopular, but if you're doing what's right, that's the thing to do. That's the thing to do. Now, Jesse, you brought out a very important part. We, we decided to vote on this thing and thank God we rescinded that. You said this thing was done ass-backwards. We were about to vote against this project ass-backwards. Didn't even give the public who'd signed up an opportunity to be able to speak on the occasion. So just as a reminder, it takes an ass to vote ass-backwards. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Madam Mayor, may I say something?
No ma'am. Next we have-
I'll say it when we're done.
Working on team building up here.
Quentin Evans.
How y'all doing today? I'm Quentin Evans, fifty-eighteen Roy C. Stallings, Junior Street. I'm also Hope Mills Middle School's new football coach. One thing I would say is, I'm gonna be blunt, military twenty-nine years, I just retired three months ago. You guys are butt hurting. You're butt hurt because you didn't come up with the project first. If they had let you, if you hadn't been your ideal, you would've voted it through. One thing I would say, as a coach, I'll work on it. Because one thing I do, when I get my brothers from third group, swing, eighty-second out on my football field, I see the change in them. They forget about the eight trips to Afghanistan, one trip to Iraq. I just buried three of my brothers from suicide. Another one from a motorcycle wreck because he was going too fast. I feel sorry for your son, ma'am, if he goes combat arms, I'm gonna be honest with you. That's when you're gonna want this project. I actually come here tonight to talk about building a recreation center for the kids down at the golf course, but then I walk in on this. I know their pain. You guys have had three Hope Mills guys die, coming from suicide. But not one sign has been put up in honor of a fallen soldier. How many has been put up in Hope Mills in a, I mean Fayetteville in the last three months? J-odds. Chris McHold just walked twenty-two miles for twenty-two. So I can Hankins, I can go down a whole list. But until it touches you personally, then you will realize, because it hadn't touched you yet. And that's the whole problem with this town. You guys are more worried about it coming out of you instead of listening to your people. Because I tell you right now, I joined the military because of those Vietnam vets. I'm from Tulsa, Oklahoma. And I watched the town, this size, grow to be real big because they listen to the people. That's all I gotta say.
Larry Jenkins.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, thank you, Council. I believe in you guys, every last one of you. I believe in you to do the right thing, to save lives. I'm a twenty-two-year-old vet, United States Army, served proudly. And I'd go again if I could. To see my comrades come back and commit suicide is appalling, appalling. Lives are important. I'm a minister of the gospel. Been a minister of the gospel for twenty, almost twenty years. If Christ said that we, lives are precious in his sight, what is Hope Mills gonna say? When they deny a great roof like this that can save lives, save our lives as veterans, I pray that you make the right decision. And I pray that you make the right godly decision on the behalf, not only of the vets, but of the city of Hope Mills and what it can do. I'm one of its newest members of Hope Mills. I moved here because of the love of this city and what you guys can do for us. I believe in this city. I'll fight for this city. The city of Hope Mills is a great opportunity. Soldiers are gonna retire, they're gonna look at this city, they're gonna look at Fayetteville. Are you gonna be the one that casts them out? Or are you gonna be the one that welcome them? Economically, it's a great, great decision, but that's your decision. And I pray that you make the right decision. And we will be praying for you. And I pray for this organization because it's a great organization and we need to support it, one hundred percent, because of the vets, like myself. God bless you and thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Born.
Is it Danita Gillian? Had to leave, okay. And Elizabeth Cooper.
Mayor Warner, Commissioners, fellow citizens. Um, no stranger to one of these meetings, I wasn't planning on speaking today. I was actually here to see about the Recreation Center right there by where I live at Steeplechase. But having witnessed Mr. Young's um, presentation and some of the comments that were made by the board, I'm deeply disturbed. I've lived here for twelve years, I've been at Steeplechase the entire time. I am a veteran, my ex-husband is a veteran, my son did an Eagle Scout project for the Parks and Rec Division, made uh, uh, picnic benches. Um- Yeah. Been involved in the sporting programs here at Hope Mills, softball, baseball. I've been a very involved uh, citizen for twelve years. And I love this community, just like Mr. Young was saying, Hope Mills, what a better name for veterans. You know, we all need hope, that's what gets us through those tough times and, and those sad moments when you doubt everything that you've ever done. Um, I just, I can't imagine how this board could not have given this a more thorough uh, review before taking a census and deciding against uh, something that, that would benefit so much of the citizenry here. I just, I can't even fathom how that happened. I mean, I know I voted for everybody on this board, um, because I'm, I've- The ones who are incumbents and have been around a while have done stellar things. The new people, I like to see new blood, you know, that was part of why I voted for you. But it, to just take a census without having all the information, without, you know, really, you know, maybe taking um, a litmus test of your community to see what their thoughts were on it? I, I do expect better of my representatives. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes public comments, that is, uh, everyone that had an opportunity to speak. The next thing on our agenda-
Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I don't know if this is appropriate or not, but I'm just gonna say it. I'd like to revisit this issue and schedule a full public hearing. I thank all of you that stood. I'm a veteran myself, as all of you know. And I'm proud of that. I'm proud of my service. This issue has been punching at me for the past couple of months, and I mean punching. Somebody asked me the other day, how you, how you feel about it? And I, and I told him, I said, you know, the last couple of nights I ain't had much sleep at all because it's punching at me. Made a decision on June eighteenth with the damn information, excuse my language, with, with that information that I had, this board had. That's the decision we made. So Mayor, I'm gonna ask tonight that we revisit. Not gonna say, I don't know how, how the decision will come out, but we'll, I think we should revisit and schedule a full public hearing for it, whichever way that it goes.
I'll second the motion to revisit it. Uh, I have more information. You guys still don't have all the information yet, because we didn't have it to give you. And I apologize to you for that.
I do too.
Having the information to give you.
That's my motion, Mayor.
Have a motion.
I don't know if it's appropriate, but that's my motion.
If I may, Mayor, um... I'll probably be ridiculed for being a CPA with thirty-three years' experience as well tonight. I do look at numbers. Last year, we took a property that was valued at two-hundred-and-sixty-three thousand on our books. We sold it for fifty thousand to the VFW ten-six-thirty, who I greatly admire. And they've done great things for Hope Mills.
Thank you.
So that was a hundred-and-ninety-thousand-dollar donation on our part in this past fiscal year. My problem is, if it's not, if we don't have an arms-length transaction, Mrs. Charlotte Robinson's right there and she's asked us for money, and she has a good cause for underprivileged children. You know, maybe we need to scarf up two-hundred thousand for her. But if we do an arms-length transaction, I don't have a problem with it. I still have a problem, um, that McAdams Group, for some reason, Parks and Rec is also for the veterans. Um, we own the golf course as an entry point on the creek for kayaks, canoes, whatever. The exit point would be right there at Cotton Fire Department and we could have staging areas for the veterans to enjoy as well. So I don't, I don't like the way this meeting went tonight. I'm, I'm embarrassed still that uh, this board wasn't informed from the get-go. Um, I don't know if it's a trust issue or what. We were, I asked this mayor, did she expect us making a decision in an hour and a half presentation to sell our most precious piece of property on Lake Bed Number Two with just cold turkey? And she said yes. And uh, that's not the way we operate. We try to make informed decisions. And uh, it's not about Lone Survivor, uh, this is not a trial on Lone, Lone Survivor. So uh, anyways.
The, the reason was that it was going to be a decision was going to be made and I was in favor of Lone Survivor. And I need to reiterate, I do not have a vote. I can, I have people coming to me all the time, giving me information, bringing me things that would be good for Hope Mills because I am the mayor. But as your mayor, you would not want me not to be a good ambassador. And likewise, the Sunshine Center was on our books as a donation to the town. And yes, we sold it for fifty thousand dollars, which was a wash because of the work that we had done there to improve the site. We didn't lose any money on that because every veteran that goes there has the opportunity to have that, that site. And it's a wonderful site, you can, you can check the veterans that are here. And it's also named after former mayor Edwin Dever. So I don't, I don't, I will not say anything that's not a good thing about what we've done. This property, they've agreed that they gave us a low offer and they're willing to give us a high offer. They're also willing to give us an offer that if something changes, that they'll give it back to us. I don't know what a better deal you got than that. That's what we did, the golf course. The golf course is what we did. They leased the golf course and they got tired of leasing it and they gave it back to us. So I mean, we've done it before, but again, I am not trying to not have a team up here. The team is this way, there's five of them. I do not have a vote. I am the ambassador, I am the leader of this board. But when it comes right down to it, not whatever good idea I may have, the results of that idea comes from these men and women. So I just want you to know that, yes, I'm an advocate for this and yes, I would vote for this if I could vote. And I go on record in saying that it is a good cause for Hope Mills and it is a good thing. Look where it's located. What are we gonna do with that property? We can't do anything with it, it's, it's, if we do it, it can't be right now because we've got a public safety building to pay for. We've got to finish like phase one, phase two, phase three down at the lake and Heritage Park. We've got a museum we're working on and we've got a ninety-acre golf course to convert to recreation. Those are big dollar projects. So why not? Why not let it be developed, that small acreage? And then what we do is we in turn, we've got sixty or however many, there's sixty-four plus acres down there. And granted, um, where they wanna be, it's not, it's not priority acreage. You can go to there and take a look and you'll see, probably not a soul in here would build your house in that area. So-
Madam Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
This has never been an issue about this board not supporting this foundation. I don't ever want you to think that. What happened in that closed session, I would horrify some of you because I turned to you and I asked you if you were privy to this information before this board and you said-
Yes, I was.
You said no.
I said not, it's not the, all the full report, but yes, I was privileged to the fact that Lone Survivor wanted to come.
The second meeting you did. The first meeting you did not.
What, I'm the mayor. That's what the mayor does.
Lie to your board?
No, I didn't lie to my board.
I, I wasn't the only one there, everyone was in here.
No, they weren't. Commissioner Legg wasn't there.
I was at the first meeting.
He was at that meeting.
No, not that one you, you voted against.
That first meeting.
The first meeting.
All right, just continue. I've given my spiel, you give yours, ma'am.
How, this is just, I have no problem doing the public hearing. We can do the public hearing for the people of Hope Mills. But they will understand that we, as a board, were kept in the dark. You were privy to information, you did not share it with this board.
Again, as mayor of Hope Mills, I am privileged to certain information, but there was no hiding anything. It was brought to the board when it was appropriate for the board to get the information. And I don't believe that there's anyone in here that would not want it to be brought before the board. And if that is the case, you know, my job as ambassador, my job is I speak for the town, oftentimes I'm the one that they come to see. And whatever this board decides, up or down, I have to support it, which means that then I have to answer why. And in this particular case, I don't have a good answer for why. And I do know that the ones that have been adamant and have been against this, not just this board, but a lot of them, for whatever reason, um, are pulling the strings of this board. And why? I do not understand. When that location is a perfect location, if you haven't been there, I think part of the public hearing might be to go down there and check it out. Especially so you can see the, the easements and the lift station and all the things that would just make it remote for them. We have a motion on the floor. Is there any more discussion on the motion? We have a motion in a second and that would be that we hold a public hearing. An opportunity for a public period, hearing could be August. What's our first meeting in August?
No, no, Mayor, I want us as a board to revisit this issue and schedule a public hearing.
Okay, well, that's, okay, well, that's, when would you like to do that?
Tomorrow.
August sixth is the next board meeting.
Our next board meeting.
August sixth.
August sixth. That's the motion.
And my second was to support the motion for a public hearing.
We, we need to look at the-
Not saying that I would change my vote or anybody else would.
We need to look at the public hearing.
But I think that would give us at least two more weeks to hear from the public on both sides. And those people who are interested can come in here.
Second meeting in August.
That does what I wanted to do a while ago, put it to a ballot. So we have the chance to now to put it to a ballot.
Alright, so August the sixth.
Mayor, it's got to be the second meeting.
It's gonna have to be the second.
It's gonna have to be the second.
Okay, so August the...
August twenty.
It's the twenty. August twentieth.
August twentieth.
It's to give us time to advertise the public hearing.
Okay. So a public hearing, and then that would also give an opportunity for any additional information to be brought to the board prior to that also.
Yes.
And the public hearing could be on that evening. So we have a...
Seven P.M.
Seven P.M. Okay, we have a motion in a second that we hold a public hearing in reference to Lone Survivor Foundation on August the twentieth at seven P.M. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none opposed, we'll set that up for August the twentieth at seven P.M.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Ms. Mayor, I just have a question being transferred to. I was at screenshots from a private group of some of your commissioners and other townspeople that hold talk. You're talking about leaving the Lord in the dark, but this has been a discussion for two weeks while I was on vacation between other people in the community and people like myself don't have privilege to that information, but because I have friend-to-friends, I can see that information. So how is that any different than what y'all are talking about, we let you in the dark or you let each other in the dark, but you're leaving the whole public in the dark?
We're having a public hearing.
Thank you, ma'am. And the public, please come, those of you that have been here this evening, please attend the next public hearing on August the twentieth at seven P.M. And I will, at this time, we have a presentation by Development and Planning Administrator, Mr. McLaughlin and Darswell Rogers.
Mr. Rogers left.
I think Mr. Rogers had to leave. And PWC and their reporting results of the May twenty-second, twenty-eighteenth Building Business Rally held at Fayetteville Technical Community College.
Mayor, can I ask you for maybe a short recess?
All right, at this...
A very short one, but can I ask you for that?
At this time, we'll have a recess until five after nine.
Thank you.
Point of a presentation.
All right.
Mr. McLaughlin. I'm back. What I'd like to do is this presentation, I'll try to be brief, because I know we've been here for a while. This is just a recap of a very, very powerful, I guess, event that was held, or at least spearheaded by PWC. Town Hope Mills Planning, Procuring, and Public Works staff participated in what we call the Local Building Business Rally. It was held on May twenty-second, twenty-eighteen, Fayetteville Technical Community College. The main purpose of the event was to attempt to bring agencies together from all over Cumberland and the Hope County areas, also known as the MSA, to provide local contractors and businesses with information on bidding opportunities available throughout the region. One of the things that made this event so powerful is that usually if you're talking about increasing bidding opportunities for local businesses, people's brains go directly to construction. We're trying to explode that frame of mind by saying that this is just about us trying to do business. So what I'll do is go through a brief portion of it that speaks to how the, what we call the BBR was birthed, and then I'll give you some specific data on the results, on how many businesses engaged the Town of Hope Mills. The genesis of the BBR was that in twenty-fifteen, Fayetteville City Council asked PWC to accelerate Phase Four sewer installations. PWC solicited bids to accelerate the work, but for some reason, there were no takers. At that point, the commission defines building local supplier capacity as a strategic opportunity. So the first thing they did was they defined what local means. You have to have an office within a metropolitan statistical area, and that's basically Hope County and Cumberland County. Impacts local government includes local subcontractors, local providers bidding for business. And based on some of the numbers, in twenty-seventeen, forty-five percent of dollars in fiscal year twenty-seventeen remain local. That breaks down to about twenty-point-five million out of forty-five-point-five million. So there's a twenty, almost a twenty-five-million-dollar gap that's not being captured locally. So what PWC did in twenty-sixteen, they had several initial rallies. City County, PWC hosted two of them. From an educational standpoint, they provided general information on how to be a subcontractor, how to get bonding. These are all things that we feel helped to grow small businesses. But based on the turnout, we would conclude that the success was moderate. Now, in terms of steps on how we got to the current BBR, the chair, Evelyn Shaw, asked PWC to head up the initiative. That's when they contacted us to be a part of this, so myself and Acting Public Works Director, Don Sisco, became part of the planning committee from Hope Mills' standpoint. But at that table was Cumberland County Public Schools, City of Fayetteville, Godwin Public, Spring Lake and other places. So it's not just bidding opportunities for contractors and municipalities. You had a lot of other entities that were there as well. Again, on October seventh, October twenty-seventeen was the initial meeting. In November, we defined local to be the MSA, decided on a BBR for twenty-eighteen. So this is the planning stages. We stayed under the radar. We did a selective venue. We selected a venue and date in January of this year, broadened the invite list in February this year, and then we did proclamations. If you guys recall, in April, we had a, brought a proclamation to you guys to approve. And what that was, was an official position from the Town of Hope Mills to support the event. Those proclamations were given from all the municipalities that were participating. And then we had the, we launched the FABids.com. Now, what that is, is what happens is, when we just went through our budget season, we provided PWC and the group with all of our projected spends over the next five years. So what all those other entities did was provide that information as well, and we put it in a centralized location called FABids.com. So what that does is, if I'm a local business and I wanna do business with Hope Mills, but I also wanna do business with Spring Lake, I don't have to go to those locations. I can go to FABids to find out all that information in one centralized location. And the rally was held in May. Now, in terms of recap, there were thirteen purchasing managers present, fourteen support organizations, a hundred-and-fifty companies, three hundred and plus attendees, six breakout sessions. In terms of the results, ninety-four percent of the participants ranked the BBR as excellent. Ninety-one said the BBR was beneficial to their business. Ninety-six percent made potential business connection. In terms of directly tied to Town of Hope Mills, we had twenty-six business registrations. One hundred percent of those registrants are located in the MSA or Cumberland, Hope Counties. No registrants located outside the MSA. Registrations included a variety of businesses from water supply companies to staff agencies to manufacturers of kids' software programs. If you noticed the new water supply tanks throughout all the buildings in Town Hall, that was a direct result of me being engaged by LaBleu Water Supply Company at that rally. And they actually specifically came to me thinking, you know, you're a municipality, you know, we don't have any, we don't think that you guys would be interested in doing business with us. So I told them the pitch that I did to them, to me. The next day, I put them in contact with Letitia Black, who's our Human Resources Manager. He showed up as a vendor at our health rally, and the next thing you know, we actually run doing business with him. I was also approached by Knight Consultant LLC, who is a consulting firm in the area that specializes in grant writing, and they're interested in possibly networking with us to run a grants program to help increase our ability to use federal dollars like HUD, CDPG and home dollars. So those were some of the connections that we made directly from being participants in this event. In terms of the activities, it was definitely networking opportunities, breakout sessions. PWC had a plan room so people can review some of their things, and there was a business card exchange table. Now, in terms of some of the survey results, sixty-eight percent felt that the BBR was excellent, twenty-six percent felt it was good, five percent felt, what, sixty, twenty-six percent said very good. In terms of how whether the BBR meets your expectations, seventy-three percent said better than expected. Twenty-one percent said it was what they expected, not what's expected, was down to five percent. Was it beneficial to my business? Fifty-nine percent strongly agreed. I made potential business connections. Seventy-two percent agreed. I would attend more BB events like this, BBR events like this. Seventy-four strongly agreed. Seventy-four percent. Breakout sessions ratings, fifty percent rated as excellent, twenty-five percent very good, twenty-five percent good. Where your objectives met, where your objectives met in the breakout session, seventy-five percent says yes. How did you hear about the BBR? Social media was twenty-two percent, email was eighteen, chamber was eleven, newspaper was eight, and so on and so forth. Other was thirty-seven percent. Eighty percent rated the event as excellent. In terms of how would you rate the breakout sessions, thirty, a little bit, or above thirty percent was excellent. Close to fifty percent did not have an opinion. Many felt that the breakout session should be held during the rally, some before the rally, and some after. In terms of meeting potential vendors that meet your organization's procurement needs, that was a survey answer that we gave as the participants in it, but eighty percent of us did say that they did meet our needs. Based on the experience at this event, how likely do you participate in the future? Eighty percent of us did say very likely. How often should we hold the rally? Majority of the participants, especially the vendors like myself, fifty percent basically said annually. Do you have a list of needs your purchasing department cannot fill locally? Many of us did reply yes. Now, in terms of our feedback from the table participants, many of the comments came in, so many had prepared for the event and brought their capability statements, which really accelerated the process. Vendors need to also understand the role in events. Several vendors approached the booth and wanted us to present our information first, and we had some that offered information that pertained to our organization. So there was some trepidation on that end. Now, in terms of next steps, we've already met again for, at our June nineteenth committee meeting, where we're gearing up to basically take this data that we had, look at things that we can learn from, and help plan the next one. We did some self-assessments, learned some lessons. In terms of opportunity constraints, the FABids website is great. We're tracking the results. We're defining future goals and establishing future measurements, and the resources and policymaker commitments are something that everyone's interested in. In terms of personal observation from my end, I feel that several entities were very pleased that the opportunities reached far outside of just construction. Again, it's the mind state of some of these small businesses that are not directly related to construction that may actually think that this rally isn't for them if they're not in the construction business. And that is categorically not true. I would say that a large percentage of the business that were interested, businesses that were interested in Hope Mills were just interested in doing business with this municipality, whether it was construction, whether it was purchasing, whether it was a water supply company. There's a company that builds kids' technologies that I'm facilitating a meeting with Kenny with respect to Parks and Rec. So it's a lot of different avenues. I would say the majority of the people who engaged me were outside of construction-related. So I definitely feel that that was something that they benefited from. They were very enthusiastic about the minor projected spend over the next five years, fiscal years here in Hope Mills, which is thirty-five million. Many participants wanted more information or opportunities to be educated on the subjects of the breakout sessions. The coordinated, committed municipal outreach is a plus, and that's basically all of us that's coming together, trying to figure out ways to tag this more in a regional standpoint. Education incentives is key. It's too easy to continue doing the same supplier, so we definitely need to span this out. Counting the bidding is key, and we're also broadening the corporate involvement. That's basically it. Again, this is not something that requires a vote. This is something that I just felt that, and part of us, what we're doing with the continuing with efforts on the committee is to try to give this information back to our respective boards to let them know how successful this was, and to let them know that we're still continuing those efforts to see if we can build this even bigger than it already is. Mr. Trago was here, I'm sure if you guys wanted to hear from him, but Darcelle did have to, he had another engagement. But this is just something we felt that the board needed to at least be aware of in terms of some of the successes that were achieved at this event.
And thank you for all you did on that committee. I know they asked the mayors to write something in support of it and kept us abreast of it, but I appreciate everything you did representing Hope Mills and a number of our businesses that actually participated. So again, thank you for good job.
I'm very enthusiastic about participating, and one of the main things Don and I said is that we, I definitely wanna continue to be a part of this initiative, and we're looking forward to figuring out, because now that we have the golf course coming, definitely with respect to the report coming from McAdams and our combined joint building that we're having, those are direct construction-related opportunities that are coming, which is what was included in that thirty-five project, that five-year fiscal year projected spend of thirty-five million. So a lot of people were interested. I will say, and Lexi Hesapis is here as well, she's with PWC. I will say that even though none of that work was led or the RPs were out at the time of the rally, the future events will come right along the time that we're actually soliciting for bids directly related to some of this construction. So I'm hoping that not only can we increase, because I think if you remember talking to Hector and Don, we've had some issues. We're trying to get some good turnout on bids as well, so we're hoping that this will help us all in the region. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you, sir.
Wish I was sitting down, but I'm not.
Okay, before you do that, I have a proclamation. This is, whereas the National Association of Town Watch, NATW, is sponsoring a unique nationwide crime, drug, and violence prevention program on August the seventh, twenty-eighteen, entitled National Night Out. And whereas the Thirty-Fifth Annual National Night Out provides a unique opportunity for the Town of Hope Mills to join forces with thousands of other communities across the country in promoting cooperative police-community crime prevention efforts. And whereas it is essential that all citizens of the Town of Hope Mills be aware of the importance of crime prevention programs and impact that their participation can have on reducing crime, drugs, and violence in the Town of Hope Mills. Whereas police-community partnerships, neighborhood safety, awareness, and cooperation are important themes of the National Night Out program. Now, therefore, I, Jackie Warner, Mayor of the Town of Hope Mills, do hereby call upon all citizens of the Town of Hope Mills to join the Hope Mills Police Department and the National Association of Town Watch in supporting the Thirty-Fifth Annual National Night Out on Tuesday, October the seventh, twenty-eighteen. And this, there's a flyer that has been produced that says the Town of Hope Mills Police Department presents the National Night Out. Join us from six to nine P.M. at Hope Mills Municipal Park. And they've got skydivers, bounce houses, free food and drinks, music, and activities for the kids. So this is an opportunity for our community to get involved in the National Night Out. Next thing we have is public hearing. It's P eighteen dash twenty-one. It's a rezoning of ten plus or minus acres from R seven-five residential CZ conditional zoning for nonprofit recreation center and other specific requested allowed uses to RR Rural Residential CZ conditional zoning for indoor recreation for profit and other specific requested allowed uses or to a more restrictive zoning district located at forty-two-twenty-one Black Bridge Road, submitted by Thurston and Charlotte Robinson owners. Can I turn it back over to you, sir?
First, I'd like to just remind you guys, this is the Charlotte Robinson Life Center, TJ Robinson Life Center. Many of us are fully aware that it is under construction. Even though this is a rezoning, I definitely wanna frame it as something that they, you guys approved a year ago with a request to change the zoning in a way that would open up financing for them. So I'll get more detailed about that in my presentation, but this won't alter, this request is not gonna alter the permit or the design that has already been approved, and that's already in place. In terms of the requested rezoning or the existing zoning, the subject property is outlined or hashed as currently zone, R seven-five slash. Should be CZ. And this is the land use. All of this is basically the same as what you had. And this is the land use, all of this is basically the same, uh, is what you had, um, last year when they made this request. It was under construction at that time as well, that hasn't changed, um, either. This is the subject property in, in an area that's outlined in white. The hydro- hydroxyl, the hydroconclusion soils, um, are the same, they do not negatively impacted that green area. Um, there is a le- uh, a stream that runs through it, but they're going through the process with Army Corps and environmental, um, to, to get those approvals. Water and sewer is available to the site. This is the existing site plan that was approved, again, that site plan has not changed. These are some of the photographs, again, it's under construction. Um, and just to, to reiterate, um, last year they made a request, the initial approval was R seven five conditional use, uh, district some years ago. And they came to us about a year ago asking to change it to R seven five slash C Z, because from a financing standpoint, there are additional uses that if they're allowed to expand those uses out in terms of what's allowable, it opens up another door of financing. The board approved it because it's conditional zoning, you, it gives you the authority to actually, um, have the condition to the site plan, strike down certain zoning, um, uses that will be allowed, or at least to make sure that the intent of what they currently have and what they currently have been approved and under construction is preserved. Sometime ago, they came back to us with, uh, the current request, basically stating that a, uh, for-profit recreation, indoor recreation center being allowed to be added to the, to the, um, approval would also open up some additional financing. If you guys recall, a couple of months ago, they came to us asking for some financial assistance, I'm not sure that we were able to do that, but I feel when this request came in, this would be a way to possibly put them in a position to receive some of that additional financing without having to actually make a commitment on our end. So ultimately, we found out that R R is the actual zoning classification that would allow for the indoor recreation for profit. So that's why you currently have the request to now, uh, rezonate from R seven five C Z to R R C Z. Uh, again, the site plan won't change, the current construction won't change, the building permit that has been issued that's currently under construction will not be altered, but what Mrs. Robinson did submit to staff is a list of fourteen uses. In your packet, you, I put the entire permitted use table, because I think some of you guys will ask, what are the comparative uses? So that gives you an idea to see what uses are allowed in R R versus what uses that allow in R seven five. But because it's conditional zoning, Mrs. Robinson has the ability to request that only these fourteen uses, um, move forward. I'd like to pass these out on the floor. Most helpful. So what this basically does is, if you look at that permitted ta- table of R R, this actually cuts that down even more. So if there were some uses that you were a little nervous about, what she's saying here is part of the approved con- of the negotiated conditions, because as you remember, conditional zoning allows you guys to pretty much negotiate what, what are mutually agreed upon. They have to be agreed upon, but this is her effort in saying, you may have some issues with some of those uses in R R that R seven five may not have asked. I'm not asking for those uses, I just need these fourteen. Um, other than that, that's basically it, again, this was, uh, very similar to the previous request that was approved by this board. This is just another residential zoning classification, it's not going to commercial. And again, these uses will be the only allowable uses, only if this doesn't move forward. I don't see anything that tells me that they're not going to continue to move forward with the current construction. It's actually, um, looking, the photographs that I, um, that I showed you before was from last year. If you go out there now, they've made a considerable amount of progress since that time. Um, so again, this request, from my understanding, is specifically tied to a, uh, avenue of financing that would open up if they have, um, some additional uses that are allowed. Um, on the, um, in terms of the twenty-thirty and Southwest gr- um, um, plan that called for urban, twenty-thirty did, Southwest called for medium-dense residential and suburban residential. Um, but staff is recommending approval, Cumberland County Board, um, voted to approve it in Ju- on the June nineteenth hearing. Um, so it actually is in compliance, um, with everything that I'm reviewing from a zoning standpoint, but I'd like to open up the floor to any questions that you may have.
Does anyone have any questions before we have the opening for public hearing?
Would a conditional zoning stay with Mr. and Mrs. Robinson? If it's, uh, if they transfer ownership, do they have to go through that process again?
No, this, this stays with the life of the project, life of the, the land.
Who, who's making the request?
Uh, this is Mrs. Robinson, uh, she's. She's here, she's, uh, she's making that request.
It stays with Miss, Mrs. Robinson and Mr. Robinson, the, the conditional zoning of the property?
No, it runs with the property. Part of the conditional zoning is conditioned in the site plan as well, so that's the consist- system of controls that I, I feel that are in place that if they, for some reason, decide not to do this project, this project is still approved and any deviation from that would have to come back to the board for approval. So someone else could come in and just act, let's say, I just want to turn this into a farm. Um, that's what the conditional zoning preserves in terms of the system of controls that the board will have.
Any other questions? At this time, we'll open the floor for anyone that would like to speak against this proposal. Is there anyone that would like to speak against this proposal? Is there anyone that would like to speak in favor of this?
Just across the street from this proposed facility. And one of the issues that we deal with in our subdivision is we have no playground. And it is unsafe for our children to make their way down here to the municipal park to enjoy the, the things that they have here. So having a for-profit or, you know, multi-use recreation place just across the street from our community would be a huge thing for the kids in our neighborhood who are always getting in trouble for being in the streets, bouncing balls and, uh, for their basketball goals in the sh- on the curbs and things of that nature, all the things that are safety issues. And so I, as, you know, a board member, I recognize the reason we can't have that. But if we, they could just access a recreation center across the street, that would be a huge thing. And we have so many teenagers in our neighborhood with nothing to do. And like I said, most of them are underage for driving, they can't get down to the park on their own. You know, it would, it would alleviate a lot of those issues for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir, become the microphone.
Madam Mayor and the board, I am totally in support of this as well. But at the same time, the city of Hope Mills would benefit financially for the summer fact is, we heard earlier about a recreation center on a property, property that long survived once. Why not marry up with the Robinsons and use this for the community as a whole? It's already there, the land is cleared, and it would save Hope Mills approximately twenty-four million dollars from building a new recreation center right down the street. The Robinsons put their lifesavers into it, because they love. And just to let you know, something that was in the news today, the recreational basketball team, their semi-pro female team just won the national, I mean, the state championship and going for the national championship on August third through the fifth in Charlotte, North Carolina. That's what the Robinsons been doing, they taking kids, bringing up to adults, and still working with them as they become adults. This recre- recreation center would benefit Hope Mills, Cumberland County, Hope County, Robinson County, Blading County. It's not just that. This here is God-sent opportunity, and if you're a believer, I'm a veteran, and I honor you on that. Twenty-three years retired Lieutenant Colonel, I'm a psychologist, I'm the code, I'm the chair of Alaska Baby Help, C F A. I know what we need, and family coming together, we are family, you, the elected officials, and everybody that orders here, we are family, we are not enemies to each other. The Robinsons is your family. This is our family, this is our home, Hope Mills is home. So let's take advantage of this right here and support them on this right here, whatever it takes, thank you.
You need name and address or anything?
Yes, sir, if you give us your name and address.
Dr. Michael McGuire, I live at seven thirty Ashburn Drive, Fayetteville, North Carolina. I have land in Grace Creek, my daughter lives on, and Hope Mills, Fayetteville, Cumberland County is my home. I was born overseas with my family from Gottman, North Carolina, and I'm a country boy, as you said, straight up, hee-haw country.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone else would like to speak, uh, in reference to this, can I forward please?
Good evening, my name is Towanda Giles, I live at nineteen Ruton Court in Fayetteville. Um, I just wanted to read this real quick, I, I actually got this from, uh, Mr. John Morowski, who's in, um, charge of T D A, tourism and development, and he just wanted to let you know from the economic standpoint, um, of course, it's going to be a recreation center during the day, but we will be having, um, sports tournaments during the weekend. And for example, um, an average person will spend a hundred and twenty-one dollars for the weekend. And we'll have like for one tournament, two hundred teams or two hundred players come in. So we're looking at an average of seventy-three thousand dollars coming into the community, community with the gas, hotel. I know we only have one hotel, but, you know, that hotel will be packed, um, food, um, and we can also direct the players and the families to where they want to go or eat, suggest that we would definitely recommend, hey, stay in Fayetteville, I mean, Hope Mills, spend your dollars here, if it's too crowded, you can, you know, trickle out to Fayetteville, but we will definitely have a huge economic impact for the community. And as well as, um, the lady said, somewhere for the kids to go during the week, so they're not just idly, you know, running around in the street. So this is definitely something we need for the community, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion closed.
Okay, thank you, so we're back to, um, and do we have, uh, any other questions that we have for, uh, Mr. McLaughlin or in your, um?
Are y'all looking for four motions, three motions?
Um, actually, um, and, um, director from the county, Tom Lloyd, uh, gave us a template on how they're doing things a little different, so basically the way I have it written up in your packet, read that verbatim, that covers everything.
Okay, I'll entertain that. Uh, recommend approval of case P eighteen dash twenty-one, uh, for approval for the rezoning from R seven point five residential slash C Z conditional zoning for nonprofit recreation center and other specified allowed uses to R R rural residential, C Z conditional zoning for indoor recreation for profit and other specific allowed uses. And find A, that the, this approval is an amendment to the adopted current Southwest Cumberland Land Use Plan twenty-fourteen map, and that the Board of Commissioners should not require, that we should not require any additional request or application for amendment to said map for this request. Item B, the following change in conditions, um, in amending the zoning ordinance, zoning map to meet the development needs of the community is met. The requested district is consistent with the suburban residential designation by the Southwest Cumberland Land Use Plan. And the nonprofit recreation center was approved in twenty-eleven prior to the adoption of the Southwest Cumberland Land Use Plan. And item C, and this rezoning is reasonable and in the public interest because the use will provide a valuable alternative source of organized recreation for the citizens in the surrounding community.
I have a motion to have second.
Madam Mayor, that made me very tired listening to this. I second the motion.
All right, I have a motion and a second, any other discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand, seeing none opposed. Thank you, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, for being here this evening. Next on our consent agenda, and I'll read this, if there's anything you'd like moved to new business, we can do so. Consideration of approval of the minutes from the July ninth, twenty-eighteenth special meeting. Consideration of approval of the minutes from the July ninth, twenty-eighteenth regular meeting. Consideration of approval of the release of the closed session minutes from March sixteenth, twenty-seventeen, May fifteenth, twenty-seventeen, September sixth, twenty-seventeen, September twenty-fifth, twenty-seventeen, October the ninth, twenty-seventeen, and October twenty-third, twenty-seventeen. Consideration of approval of budgeted purchase of two new Mark twenty-eighteen Ford police sedans from Capital Four totaling eighty-two thousand, seven hundred, fifteen dollars and seventy-six cent. Consideration of approval of travel expense of one thousand, four hundred and twenty-seven dollars and sixty-eight cent for Human Resources Assistant Patricia Jenkins to travel to Chapel Hill for U N C School of Government's introduction to public employment law. This is a five-day course from Monday, September the tenth to Friday, September the fourteenth, twenty-eighteen. Is there anything that you'd like moved to new business? If not, do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the consent agenda as written.
Have a motion, have a second, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand, seeing none opposed. Next we go to old business, and first thing under old business is consideration of the town water quality testing policy for the Hope Mills Lake. And this is behind tab eight, and I'll turn it over to Ms. Adams.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, town attorney, uh, Dan Hartzog, wanted to take a look at the, um, portion of the proposed policy that pertain to the violations, um, and as, you know, we discussed, the first thing he said, well, is, you know, are you going to find people if they go swimming, and I said, no. This is strictly a notification process for people. We are not going to have the time to find people if they're in swimming, it's a swim at your own risk. So, um, attorney has taken that portion out, he's reviewed everything else. So it's before you all for your consideration.
May I ask a question? Why are we putting up green signs, yellow signs, red signs? Why don't we just put up a sign that says, swim at your own risk? And if they go in the water, they go in the water.
You can do that.
It, it's their bodies, uh, especially if we don't have time to enforce it, does that still make us liable, responsible for anybody should go in there?
It's not meant to be an enforcement tool, it's meant to be a notification tool.
The language in the ordinance to make it clear that it is still swim at your own risk, that this is a system designed to educate the public about the water quality, but it is not a, if you see green, that doesn't mean guarantee the safety, go swim and you're fine. It means the last time we tested, it was acceptable. Uh, but it is still, and we make clear in here that it is still a swim at your own risk situation. This is just, you know, an educational tool to let public know about the last time we tested what the levels were.
Okay, but is that green sign going to send mixed signals to somebody instead of the red sign that says, swim at your own risk? Are we liable if we put the swim at your own risk sign up and somebody gets a disease from that lake?
No, I don't think so.
Are we at risk of being held liable if we put the green sign up and somebody gets?
I don't think so, and that's why I amended some of the language in this ordinance to, to make it clear that the green sign, and we can have, us right under the green, we'll still say swim at your own risk. Um, the, the way the ordinance reads it is, is, is totally voluntary for the town to do this, this is a, a program that's designed to, um, I think if you look at the, the last line in the policy in section, uh, well, there's two sections, we need to fix the section number.
Okay, we can do that.
But under the abrogation section, the town reserves the right to deviate from this policy at any time. Meaning, you know, if we forget to test one time, or we don't have the opportunity to test, it was green, and then all of a sudden something happens and we have not tested in the interim. Um, the, the idea is that this policy is not creating any duty, which I think I also included that language earlier on in the policy, that nothing in here should be read as creating any affirmative duty for the town to conduct testing. This is just, in addition to the swim at your own risk sign, it'll also present information about the last time that it was tested, it was safe.
Which this was triggered by public and the board, and the board as far as concerns about the water. So I don't, I believe, personally, I'd, I'd guess the board can comment on this, but I believe if we have a, a policy, then at least we can, we should, we're being, we're doing our due diligence.
Right, but that, that was my concern as well when I first viewed the policy, is that are we creating a duty on ourselves that if we say green and someone gets sick, are we then, you know, liable because we have said, hey, it's green, it's good to go? And that's why I sort of reworked the, the wording a little bit to, to make sure it is clear in the ordinance that it, well, one, it's not an ordinance, it's a regulation.
Regulation, it's a policy.
Just adopted by policy, so it doesn't have the force of law. Uh, but two, you know, we make clear in here that this is not to be read as creating any affirmative duty. It's still swim at your own risk. Um, just because it says green doesn't mean that we have guaranteed the safety of the water. It just means that the last time we tested, it was safe.
You're dealing with people.
Yeah.
Yes ma'am, Mr. Edwards.
Thank you. Um, I haven't really seen the signs, I'm sorry to say, but, um, when they're saying swim at your own risk, is that also in Spanish?
I don't know.
We're ordering, or we have ordered some signs. Okay, we were, we were waiting on, um, cause there's a discussion this evening on the signage at the lake, so.
Oh, okay.
Reason I brought this up, I had a gentleman call me from Southern Ohio that saw the sign some way on, I don't know, on the website or something. And he got my phone number and he called me Thursday or Friday. He said, won't you simply put up red signs that says swim at your own risk? That's what we did, cause we got sued and we were advised to do it that way.
And I will say that, that from a liability perspective, that would be a safer route as far as liability. This, you know, we were tasked with, with doing this policy, and so I tried to sort of make it more of a swim at your own risk type policy while still meeting that goal of providing the information. But it is, I, I can't argue that it would be better from a liability perspective to just say swim at your own risk.
Would, how much money would it save us having to print up five yellow signs, five red signs, five green signs?
We're, we would just order one sign and post down there, and it would be interchangeable.
One red sign or one of each of the other.
Interchangeable, I think is what we're looking at with the color coding.
Okay, I got, I lost you, I'm sorry. So how many signs do we have to make?
I think it would be, I think we're, I'm not really sure yet, but I think we're looking at one frame where we stick the color coding down in, and we would just interchange it, so three signs.
The cost of testing is probably much more than that.
Yeah, oh yeah.
That's what I was getting at. And it would, it wouldn't totally relieve us of possibility of being sued. But it's there, it's there, it's swim at your own risk. You know, and I agree with the, to, to Mr. Legrand that called me from Ohio. But are we running our people down if we don't post three different color signs?
Madam Mayor, could we, could we just post it on the website? Would that be a safer alternative as far as liability? If we just posted the water quality testing as it comes in on the website, not down there on the signs, which we could just, and then just do the swim at your own risk down there, would that be a safer option for the town?
Probably yes.
Okay.
You know, and, and the, I guess the argument if someone did get sick and said, well, hey, you had a green sign up that says it's okay. If nothing else, you're sending the signal, even if you've tried to protect yourself with the policy, you've tried to protect yourself with the swim at your own risk. There's still potentially an argument that you have sent a signal by having a, a green light up there.
So we could post the actual readings plus green, yellow, red on the website and, and...
And make clear that this was, uh, as of whatever day last testing.
Just keep the swim at your own risk signs down there that would stay.
How much does it cost us for the testing?
Thirty dollars.
Each time?
But we're only gonna be testing once a month.
And that's for, oh, Madam Mayor, and that, and that's for...
The swimming season.
And that's only for testing?
Five, five locations.
Five locations, okay. After, what, Labor Day, we're not testing anymore?
We weren't, we weren't going to because nobody's swimming after, after the swimming season.
Okay, which is?
April one, I understand, is when the lake opens and apparently people want to get in and swim, um, in cold water. So April one to whenever the lake closes, which I think is the end of September, or it's more like the end of September, first of October, when it, the lake officially closes. So it's during the entire time the lake is officially opened.
Okay.
That makes it clear.
If you did that where you post on the website, you could still issue advisories, you know.
You could actually post what the readings were too, and really cover yourself along with red, yellow, whatever color, and then just have the at-risk at down at the lake, which, if that's the best, if, I think if that's the safest thing for the town, that's the direction we should go for liability purposes.
Madam Mayor.
Yes sir.
You know what bothers me is that people will see a green sign down there and just jump in. And just go at it. Well, the sign says green, I'm getting in. And if some, and if I become sick or ill, or anything happens, it's up to you because y'all put that green sign up there. I'd rather not put a sign at all and just put swim at your own risk. I, that's just me. I, I'm just gonna say, I, I wouldn't put a color up there at all. I'd just say swim at your own risk. If you wanna know what the, the readings are from the testing, they're on the town website.
Did you just make a motion?
Would we, are we gonna do...
I guess so, sir.
Well, we need to take, we need to rework this then, because that's not working like this, so that, so...
We, we'll have to revise.
We would have to revise this.
Consensus, I guess.
And bring it back.
Is that the consensus of the board that we want to do that route?
Y'all guys, y'all good with that?
I would go to see one sign, we don't have to go through the, uh, expense of making different signs, or five locations, or whatever it is. We can just, uh, uh, post a sign down there and go forward.
You could do, you could do, you have, you have one, you have one.
Go ahead.
You could do red, and that means stop, and then swim at your own risk.
That's the reason I said red, cause Mr. Legrand said red.
I wouldn't even do, I wouldn't do a color, I'd just put, just swim at your own risk. Swim at your own risk. In English and in Spanish.
Good idea.
Yeah, two languages.
Whatever other language we have.
Yeah, that's, the, the swim at your own risk is already down there.
Yeah, there you go.
That would stay with the system.
It's there.
It could be misleading to have green.
I think it would be.
So if you, if we post, if you just rework this so that it says, we're gonna post it on the website, and it's, you're gonna stay swim at your own risk at the lake, can you bring that back to us at the next meeting?
That doesn't cost anything extra for signs.
Right.
We're done.
And it looks better.
Yeah, it's not misleading. Thank you, thank you, Mayor.
All right.
So Dan's gonna bring that back to us?
Yes.
Yes, it's gonna be back to us next meeting, which will be August the...
Nice.
Sixth.
Six, August sixth meeting. All right, next we have consideration of making the lake celebration committee ongoing and changing the name to Festival Celebration Committee. And I did request this primarily because the Lake Celebration Committee wants to continue working. And they want to, uh, primarily are interested in putting the spring celebration, a spring festival, so that we would do something along the lines of, uh, a Friday, Saturday event, not a week-long event like we've done. Um, but that's, and they want the annual cardboard race to be, um, part of it and held in the spring. So when the lake opens, that would be what they'll be pushing toward. They've already got sponsors that are willing to, um, continue sponsoring the events. Uh, so that would be the thing, and, and then they could also, this group of people would be willing to work with the other committees in, uh, fundraising or, um, ideas or whatever. It's just a, a unique group of people. We would, the reason why I say unique group of people is, we would ask if they all wanted to remain on the committee before we opened it up to others. But my understanding, the last meeting that we had was that they were all very interested in continuing. So what is the wishes of the board?
I think it's a good idea, cause we can use it for any time of year, including, uh, like you said, the spring or in conjunction with the, with the, uh, October celebration if, if need be.
Well now, we got a special events committee underneath Parks and Rec that does that part, the, uh, cotton, uh, beauty pageant and all that.
Well, they, well, I think this would, would be, this would not, special events committee actually looks at the events that are scheduled. This committee would serve, uh, very similar to our other committees. And they would not, you know, they won't be a, uh, decision-making committee. They'd be a committee that, um, like for instance, the only thing they're interested right now in is just helping, but they do wanna continue the annual cardboard boat race. And there's even been some interest in the state making Hope Mills the site of the state cardboard boat race finals.
Well, look, all we're discussing here tonight is changing the name of the committee.
Changing the name to the committee, and then keeping...
I make a motion that we change the name to the Lake Celebration Committee.
I'll second that.
To the Festival Committee.
And I just had a quick question on the...
I'll second that, Commissioner Legg.
The non-residents, uh, so on our other committees, the non-residents aren't allowed to vote, are non-voting, right? They're not, non-voting here?
And the, the thing I think that I wanted to stress too about this committee is that many of them have a Hope Mills address, but they're not in Hope Mills. So that was the, that was the eye-opener for them is the ones that live out Grace Creek that have a Hope Mills North Carolina address. There's sections out there, exit forty-one and, and, uh, Spina Road and out in that area that is Hope Mills. So that was one of the things, is that most of them have a, an address that it may not be, uh, Hope Mills, but they're very close.
Are you gonna have to have so many residents to have a quorum or to make decisions?
I don't, I think that based on the, the way this committee was set up for the lake celebration is, uh, it was very rarely that they weren't there. It's just a, it's a unique committee, and it's just all very active people that will work to do something. Uh, and the number we had was, we had twelve, actual twelve members on the committee.
I mean, if you get change out and we end up with a lot of non-residents, you're gonna have two residents making all the decisions for the committee, or... Cause they're the ones that compose...
I don't foresee that happening with this committee.
This, it wouldn't be a, it wouldn't...
Not saying it couldn't, but...
But I, I think they're just glad to work, they're willing to work.
It does, and the board will have to address it at the time.
I'm just keeping it real with the, the committees.
That's why I said it.
We have to have so many, uh, resident members to have action, uh, taken. I'm all for the non-residents participating.
Call for a question, Madam Mayor.
Okay, all those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand, seeing none opposed. And if you will, um, we want to notify them that we will meet, um, this coming, uh, first meeting in August because they want to do a recap of what we did as a committee. They wanna go through and put the good things, the things that need to be worked on, what could be improved. So they'll have their first meeting August, um, the sixth at five. And that, that would be the intent for them would be to continue that first Monday meeting, um, and, you know, and looking for them again, like I said, they're worker bees. Okay, thank you very much. Next is consideration of NCLM City Vision Annual Conference, twenty eighteen attendance from September nineteenth to September twenty-first in Hickory. And this is behind tab ten. And I guess I'll turn it over to Ms. Adams.
Madam Mayor, um, we have received information, uh, concerning the league's annual conference. And, um, the deadline to, uh, notify them of a, a Board of Commissioner attending as a voting delegate and/or an alternate voting delegate is August seventeenth. Um, but I would suggest if you all, if anyone is planning on going, the hotel usually sells out rather quickly. And if you do want to, to go, we need to go ahead and get you booked in the hotel and registered relatively soon, like...
That would, that runs on a, um, Wednesday through Friday. So I guess the, they'd probably have to go up on that Tuesday.
Tuesday night.
Tuesday night, and it'll be coming home on Friday. So is there anyone that wishes to attend, or do you wanna check your calendars? And how soon would they have to get back with you if they wanted to go?
I would say as soon as possible, um, uh, it would preferably by the end of this week.
Okay, cause we'd also have to, um, appoint whoever it is, we as a board would be appointing them as our delegate also, so...
And you could do that at, um, at the next meeting, because that does have to be, that has to be done in open session for, with a vote. You have to appoint a delegate that way.
So do we want to...
We could go ahead and get whomever registered and, and that way...
Madam Mayor, I would like to attend, I really would. I love, I love meeting with these government officials and hearing all the new ideas.
And would there be any set number that could go? Could the whole board go, or is there a recommendation for how many go?
I think we put money in your, I'm pretty sure we put money in the governing board for you all to travel to this, but...
We know that Commissioner Legg wants to go, if anyone else wants to go, let, uh, Ms. Adams know by Friday?
Yes, Madam Mayor, thank you.
Okay, so that would be, and that would be, um...
I will not be in the office, but you could let Ms. Starling know, she'll be the one actually registering in.
Ms. Starling know, but, okay. Do we need to go ahead and have a motion to authorize the registration fee, hotel and travel expenses for any board members that wish to attend, so that that way you wouldn't have to come back for that authorization?
That's fine.
Okay, do we have someone that would be willing to make that motion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, and then the motion is, we're authorizing registration fee, hotel and travel expenses for any board miss, member who wishes to attend. And then we can bring that actual amount back, but we've got a motion, do I have a second?
Take it.
So I can have a motion, a second, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand, seeing none opposed. That way you can get started on finding out how much it's going to cost. And then, uh, everybody that might wanna go, please let Ms. Adams know by, or Mrs. Starling know by the twenty-seventh.
I won't be in attendance, I got, uh, height of my, end of my tax season.
Okay.
The never-ending tax season.
Oh, my goodness.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you. All right, the next thing we have is, uh, consideration of contract with Arnie Fisher Southeastern Athletic Officials Association to provide athletic officials and authorize the town manager to execute the contract.
Yes, Madam Mayor, this is a, a standard contract we do every year for, um, the, uh, Athletic Officials Association for, um, football, basketball, soccer, baseball, and adult softball.
I'll make a motion, we authorized the town manager to do this, uh, contract with Mr. Fisher.
Do you have a conflict, Commissioner Legg?
Do I?
Yes, sir.
No, he writes my paycheck, but they told me last year I had no conflict.
It's not a conflict.
Yeah, I, I think we did look into that.
Okay.
I don't recall specifically what I found, but I recall that it was on conflict.
I think we talked about it last year when it came up.
But we don't approve the contract, Mr. Selectors have a job.
All right, then I'll withdraw my motion unless somebody else make it. I withdraw my motion and let somebody else do it.
Okay, so...
But I, I think I, if I recall correctly, I looked at it in the context of whether you could or had to vote on it. I think the answer was that you did not have the conflict sufficient to accuse yourself of voting.
That's what was just sticking in my head.
I'll go ahead and make the motion since you're gonna withdraw. I'll go ahead and make the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any other conversation in reference to this?
I do request permission to excuse myself from the vote.
As I recall looking at it last time, I don't think there are sufficient grounds for you to do that. I think it was not an issue last year because...
It's not all around me, it's for everybody.
We weren't here last year, so.
Okay, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand.
Yeah, I'm gonna go for it.
Seeing none opposed. Okay, the next thing on our agenda is consideration and approval of the nominations of the nominating committee for voluntary committee members appointments. Okay?
The nominating committee met, um, on, uh, July sixteenth and reviewed the applications. And the attached list of their recommended appointments are before you.
We had one for the Historic Preservation Commission and two for the Lake Advisory Committee, a married couple, um, Gregory and L. D. Dickerson.
Okay, so any, anyone want to make a motion to approve the recommendation of the nominated committee?
When y'all want to do that, since Jerry and I are on the...
Are you, you making a motion?
I was gonna let one of them do it since we were on the nominating...
I'll, I'll go ahead and make the motion, yeah, cause you guys were part of the nominating committee.
Yeah.
Both of y'all were, so I'll make the motion, Mayor.
All right, so I have a motion to accept the recommendations of our nominated committee, do I have a second? Have a motion, a second, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand. And I guess, um, at this time, I'd like to also, uh, read the re, uh, letter from the Lake Advisory Committee, uh, especially since we've appointed two, I don't know if this creates another opening. Uh, ladies and gentlemen, I'm hereby submitting my resignation as chairman of the Lake Advisory Committee and as a member of the committee. Uh, ladies and gentlemen, I'm hereby submitting my resignation as chairman of the Lake Advisory Committee and as a member of the committee. Offer this resignation since I have been promoted to the position of project lead of Project Healing Waterfly Fishing, Fayetteville and Fort Bragg Program. I am still an interested citizen and will be following the status of the lake. However, I will not have the time and need to dedicate to this committee. I have provided this resignation to the committee and recommend that they elect a new chairman during the regular meeting of the committee, and this is sincerely Rodrick McLean. So, uh, we appreciate, we appreciate your service and the fact that, uh, you're probably one of the best ordinance writers in our town. And we, and your scrutiny and everything else that you do with that, so just know that you're gonna be greatly missed. But also, I, since many of these members were not here when this committee was created. This was a committee that was created with some opposition, but it was a committee that once it got going, did so many great things to help us move to where we are now. So I appreciate everything you've done and I like the fact that the checkoff list is complete. You did it all and I appreciate that.
Uh, Mayor Warner, may I make a comment?
Sure.
Um, Rod also received, um, a very special honor and I'm gonna let him explain it to you because I can't. You're gonna be going on a trip before too long.
Uh, yes, ma'am. Uh, June the fourth, I participated in the Project Healing Waters Fly Fishing Regional Casting Event for North Carolina. Um, somehow or other, I won it. I'm going to Boise, Idaho for the national competition on the eighth of August.
Good luck.
See what we can do there.
Good luck.
Congratulations. Alright, next we have consideration approval for the town manager Adams and/or representative of the town to travel to Seattle, Washington to attend the annual Association of State Dam Safety Officials Awards Luncheon at the Washington State Convention Center on September the tenth, twenty-eight, ten, to accept the ASDSO National Rehabilitation Project of the Year Award.
I am so proud of that. And I'll make a motion that we, uh, approve the town manager to represent us for their, to accept that award.
May I, may I also say something, Mayor Warner? I'd like to also, um, ask that Mayor Warner attend. Let both of them attend.
Madam Mayor, I, you know. I, I'd like to see somebody from the Lake Advisory Committee go. I, I'm just gonna, 'cause the committee did a lot of work. Don't shake your head now. A lot of work. I thought it was you. Yeah, the committee did a tremendous amount of work on this project as well. I just, I, I just feel that way and I'm gonna say that, even though Rod's, you know, stepping down his chair. Uh, he and I together on that committee when it was first formed, Mayor, and you know this, uh, we, we came together with a committee for over two years. That was instrumental in meeting two or three times a month, all the way through, from start to finish of that project.
Suppose we need to check with Drew to see how much funding is available.
I, I think Drew is saying. Seattle, Washington, Seattle.
I have money in my training, um, you know, that I'm not going to.
Training?
But be spending for training, so, yeah, I'm, what I'm saying is I'm not going to be going to any school this year. So I have some, I have money in the admin budget.
And just to say, the paperwork and stuff that we had to do and the meetings that we had to do to get this award finalized, um, I was very much involved in that from the start. And it started, um, two years ago, three years ago.
Approximately two years ago.
Two years ago.
I had to meet with the lady, um, multiple times and answer lots of questions and, um, just feel strongly that I would like to represent the town. But it is the board's wishes, so.
Well, don't mean to be bitter, but I was here when the dam blew and I was here when it come back in.
That's true, you are.
I don't have, whatever everybody wants to do, I don't know.
I support one person going. So.
My, that was my motion was one person. If you don't want to be Ms. Adams, we can change it to Mayor, whatever. My motion was for the town manager.
Is there a second on your motion?
Yes.
Yes, second right here. Have a motion, a second, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand. So, one opposed, four one.
Enjoy Seattle.
And I would ask the board's permission that if we find out how much it costs, if I pay my own way, is it alright if I go?
It's alright with me.
I'm not gonna, I won't take any money from the town.
I don't have a problem with it, just.
I have been mayor from the start to the finish of this one, full time. I wasn't here when the other one blew out. But I have been mayor since it started.
Go to Seattle, Washington, that time of year. I guess you could get canned on your own, you don't have to have permission.
Well, I would not wanna go and be representing the town without your permission, so that's fine.
Did we get consensus on it?
It's, it's obvious. Discussion of panhandling as requested by Mayor Protem Mitchell.
Yes, I just, um, recently, of course, Fayetteville just passed ordinances regarding the panhandlers. Many is safety concerns on the highways, on the pedestrian, the, on, uh, medians and that type of thing. And also around ATM machines. And, um, I personally have noticed a couple panhandlers in areas I haven't seen them before in Hope Mills, on the medians. And, uh, I just think it's just a matter of time that we'll be flooded if we don't pass some kind of ordinance about it. Uh, 'cause it'll become a, in Fayetteville, in my opinion, in my opinion, county needs to take the same action. Nothing against the homeless, but, um, there's a lot of abuse that goes on. People roll up in their cars, change clothes, go out there and make a couple hundred bucks a day. And the people that really need it, um, are probably twenty percent of my, I don't know, just my opinion. But, uh, y'all can either take action tonight or you can look at it next meeting if you need more time to consider it. But I think what, um, Town Manager Adams and, uh, I think Chief Orchato has looked at this.
Um, yes, and I, I would ask that, um, if the chief, if you have any comments, um, pertaining to this ordinance. Um, before we go any further, I'd like to hear from the chief, if that, if that's acceptable.
Good evening. Uh, yeah, currently right now, Hope Mills does not have a panhandling ordinance per se. So if, uh, this is something that you wanna move forward with, this would be the time to do it. Fayetteville's got a very good, um, ordinance in place and I don't see any reason why we would have to reinvent the wheel with that.
Right, we could tweak it, adopt it ourselves.
Yeah.
This has some teeth in there for, uh, writing citations.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief.
And, uh, Town Attorney, Hartzell, Hartzell, have you looked at this as well?
Uh, yeah, I have briefly. Um, yeah, Fayetteville, I think cites people for forgiving, uh, which wishes the board of course, but that, I don't know if we wanna go that far or we wanna, do we wanna mirror theirs? Do we wanna cite people for panhandling? Do we wanna cite people for handling and forgiving to panhandlers or?
And I think the part where they get cited is if they're on a highway, right?
That may be.
On, handing it to them on the median. I, I don't think there's anything prohibit them from doing it in a parking lot.
We just have to keep our eyes peeled probably for future stuff, 'cause I gotta. I didn't mean to interrupt you, Mr. Mitchell, I'm sorry. I got a call the other day about prostitution around one of the restaurants, one of the truck stops out here at nine ninety-five. I couldn't find her. That was a joke, okay? Take it off the book, take it off of the record.
You're on TV? That's mine, he's on TV.
I don't care. Everybody knows me, though.
You'll be getting some emails.
That was just a joke.
So we're gonna let.
We can draft, we can draft a proposed ordinance.
We got to bring that back to us next meeting?
Yeah.
Just for us.
Do you want me to sort of mirror Fayetteville's at this point and then?
Yeah, I'm good, I'm good.
I think mirroring Fayetteville's is a good direction.
That'd be great. Thank you, guys.
Next on the agenda is discussion, consideration of the Hope Mills Lake Swimming Area Regarding Signage, Safety Ropes, Netting. And this is brought to us by Mr. Bell Flowers.
Thank you, Mayor. Main reason I brought this up was because as of in the last few weeks, as we well know, there's been a tremendous amount of people that are just ignoring the buoys and they're just swimming out wherever they wanna go. And this was something that was probably gonna happen all along and, and it's starting to work now. Regardless of whatever sign you put up in the lake park, they're continuing to just swim on out there. Now, I know in the past when we had the lake back before and even back in oh-three, uh, there was, uh, at least ropes tied off on the buoys out there. And there was netting underneath. Now, I think what we need to do, and I, and I read the proposal that's, uh, in the packet tonight from Deputy Chief Lopez about the, uh, about the signage out there on the buoys, which is good. I think we've already talked about the signage that we're gonna put down there, swim at your own risk. Um, but I still feel strong about, about the rope to go around the designated area. If nothing else, just to identify the swimming area itself. Because all people see are just those white buoys that are standing up out there. That's all they see. And a lot of these folks that are doing this, they weren't here when we had the lake back in, in nine. And they surely were, probably weren't here before oh-three. So they just really have no knowledge and if they do, then they're just going on out even further. That was one of the main reasons I brought it up was just to address it as a safety issue. Along with the signage. So I guess it's up to the wishes of the board of, what do you guys wanna do? You wanna put ropes back up, put signs and no ropes?
Well, I think personally, I think if we had ropes with a float between each one of them, so they'll stay high enough.
Yeah, so they'll see them.
Yeah, that somebody can see the buoys, um.
Some type of ropes you have in, in lanes and pools, it's the same type. It's a pool rope with, with floaters.
Somebody said something to me the other day about possibility of, uh, somebody getting hurt on the rope. Then don't be out where the rope is. Stay on your side of it.
That's what in F, in this, uh, summary that we've gotten from Lopez. That's what he says is that the possibility of entrapment of swimmers on or around the markers. And since there's not a lifeguard present, uh, to keep them off of the ropes, probably the same as poles. Yeah, they'll get on the ropes like they get on the poles, so I don't know.
Well, there wasn't a lifeguard down there before oh-three and there surely wasn't one down there in nine. And we had the ropes and the buoys and the poles. So I'd just like to return back to at least the rope and the buoys, just if nothing else, identify the, the swimming area as it is. Along with the signage of swim at your own risk and do not go past the poles. What more can we do?
I agree with you. I think it's much more dangerous to go swimming out in the middle of the lake than it is to have the ropes.
It just reduces the liability for us. Thank you, Commissioner Larson. Just, Dan, it just reduces more, reduces the liability for us by the identification of it.
Yeah, I, I mean, it, it, the concern, I guess, uh, from, from DC's letter is that if someone becomes entangled in the rope and you put the rope out there, then you're creating liability for yourself. And I don't know the, the science or the whatever, how often that happens or how big a risk that is. But, um, you know, if, if we put the rope out there and someone is injured by the rope, it seems to me they've, they've done something to, to cause that injury themselves. Um, and I, you know, I, I think netting is, is, I saw some idea about netting.
Yeah.
That is much more dangerous.
Yeah.
Uh, than, than sort of what I think you're talking about, which is the rope you see in a swimming pool or whatever.
With the buoys.
So there's rope and buoys attached to the poles.
You can have a sign, you know, at the same area where you have the swim at your own risk sign saying, do not touch the ropes, do not climb on the ropes.
Madam Mayor, may I ask? Dawn, a question. Is, Mr. Nico, is that gonna be? Is that, could that rope be stretched tight enough between those white markers? Are those markers permanently mount, balance or tight or they float?
No.
I'd rather see something out there, Mattel.
Somebody making a motion?
I am.
Okay, I second it.
Okay. Call to vote.
So your motion is?
To install, um, uh, ropes with, uh, with buoys attached to the poles.
Okay, so have a motion to, put ropes with buoys to the poles. Scott, a second, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand. And opposed? Four one. Right now, the next.
Is there anybody opposed to that, Mayor?
Yes, Commissioner Edwards.
Well, I didn't see her hand go up, I'm sorry.
It did go up.
Huh?
It didn't go up.
She just didn't vote.
I didn't vote.
Oh.
Alright, the next is review the Historic Preservation Commission's rules of procedure and I'll turn this over to, um, Mr. McLaughlin.
I think this is a fitting end to our meeting this evening. Um, I wanted this on the agenda just for symbolic purposes. Um, the Historic Commission ordinance was adopted by the Board of Commissions on June twenty-first, twenty sixteen. In the ordinance, it established not only the Hope Mills Historic Overlay District, but the authority of the commission to issue certificates of appropriateness for exterior renovations in historic, um, area. Section two dash one ninety-three five required, however, that the commission adopt the rule, rules of procedure governing its meetings and the conduct of official business governing the appointment of members and related matters. The ordinance also mandated these guidelines are not considered part of the Hope Mills ordinances and does not require Board of Commission approval. But this was the last, uh, piece that was left before we could say we have our historic district. It is official, we're done. Well, I wouldn't say we're done. Uh, we're, we've officially established the, the, the existing boundaries that are currently in place and the process is needed to go ahead and start requiring these certificates of occupancy for any structures located in the area or within those boundaries. I wanted this on the agenda just so that the board can have an opportunity to actually symbolically just say, we did it. Um, if you guys wanna make some comments, that's fine. Um, Mr. McLean is the new chair of the Historic Preservation Commission. Um, Dan has reviewed this document, doesn't have to go to the county, we're, we're, we're fine. Um, the next step in the process is to officially commission a consultant to draft more detailed guidelines. We actually established the general guidelines that the state preservation, um, office uses. But we wanted to establish that to go ahead and get this going because hiring a consultant to do a seventy-page set of guidelines may take a whole eight, nine months, we didn't wanna wait. So we all said that at that point, when we wanted to move with this plan of action about a year ago, that the first order of business after we've officially, uh, adopted like we are today, that our next plan of action is to move forward with the adoption of more stringent guidelines. But, um, like I said, this doesn't require a motion from the board, but I wanted to at least have it on the record. Um, so that we can at least say that something that's been a long time coming, we've actually accomplished it today.
Madam Mayor, Chancellor, what, what's the next step after this?
Um, what ultimately happened is we got rules of procedure, we got the ordinance and then the guidelines that state the type of historic, uh, renovations that are required. We felt that if we took too much time developing. We felt that if we took too much time developing very, very stringent guidelines through a consultant, it would prolong this process a significant amount. And if that, and, and as long as that process is prolonged, someone could kind of swoop in in the midnight hour and develop one of these buildings without our, uh, ability to stop it.
Okay.
So what we did was, we set a mark, and this was act, actually at the instruction of the state.
Yeah.
It basically told us that they had a, a list of boilerplate regulations that are standard or general to, to all historic areas, and we adopted those as our, our design guidelines as of right now. But when we made that decision, we said that the next order of business, once this is officially in, is to go ahead and start commissioning, um, the adoption or the creation of more stringent guidelines.
Okay.
But we have the time to do that without feeling that we're exposed, without having anything.
Okay.
So that's the next order of business, and we'll basically keep you guys updated. But this establishes the fact that any development that comes in within those boundaries and its exterior, it does have to get a certificate of appropriateness from the Historic Commission.
Are you looking at, uh, uh, let me think of the word here.
Expansion.
No. No. A consultant, are you looking at, at, are you, is one of the next faces?
The, the.
Looking for a consultant?
The only person that I honestly think that could effectively do that would be a consultant that has a significant amount of experience.
But this saves that.
This process saves us and puts us, uh, with a system or controls while we're doing that search for the consultant and the process of getting those, uh, design guidelines or more stringent set, um, drafted. Like I said, we felt that if we waited to do that.
Yeah.
We don't know how long that takes. Um, in my experience with historic preservation, these design guidelines can get extremely, extremely detailed. And it's not like myself or Rod or even Pat Hall has the ability, I mean, Pat's pretty much the historian of the whole town. But you need someone that has professional level experience. And this actually came from, um, the notes of what was required when we first started establishing all this about two years ago. That when we decided to go, um, in the direction of getting design guidelines done, they should be done by a professional consultant. It was at that point we realized, that's gonna take a while. We're right here at the end, let's go ahead and take the suggestions of the Historic, um, Preservation Office. And they gave us a list that they use that are pretty standard, but they said, get this in place now, and then it gives us the time to move forward with it in place without us worrying about being exposed.
Thank you, Chancellor.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, it can always be tweaked, but this, this pretty much, um, gives us the authority.
Any other questions? All right, we need to, we don't need to make a motion.
This is just all symbolic for everybody to say, we finally did it.
Yep.
Yep, thank you much. And next we have managers' report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I apologize, but I warned you all on Friday, I had a detailed managers' report for this evening, so. Um, just a lot of information to get out to you all and to the public. Um, I'll try to move quickly, and if you have any questions, stop me. But Phase Two, Hope Mills Lake Park, Mr. Fleming reviewed the first set of drawings with staff from Public Works Department on July seventeenth. The drawings were reviewed by the Lake Advisory Committee on July seventeenth as well. There were some questions that arose and staff has asked for additional, for some additional information from Mr. Fleming, and we are awaiting, um, that information before we are ready to bring it forward to you all. Johnson Street Sidewalk, staff from Public Works Department met with McGill Associates on July sixteenth. The design is ninety percent completed and has been provided to PWC for their review. Rockfish Road Sidewalk, Mr. Bill Rourke of McGill Associates was on site July sixteenth to assess the fiber optic line falling within the limits of construction. He has made a prelimin, he has made preliminary contact with NC DOT to develop a field change that will only require an engineer-to-engineer agreement. McGill is also eval, evaluating the sidewalk placement adjacent to the power pole across from the Alco Station. Their preliminary assessment is it, is that the road widening in front of the Alco Station was not constructed per approved plans, and they will have to develop a solution. Damaged areas from Hurricane Matthew, all areas have been inspected, um, and the, the inspection has been completed. The contractor has a punch list items of repair for some of those areas. The Gabion Barrier Inspection conducted on July twentieth, located along the bottom of the bank of the creek bed on the downstream side, revealed that the contractor may have damaged the barriers. We're working with the Inspection Agency and the US Army Corps to resolve this issue. Parks and Rec Building Mold Issue, the LRC Indoor Testing and Research Report has been received. It identifies areas requiring mediation and protocols to follow. Staff is moving forward quickly to con, contract completion of this work. The new proposed public safety building, um, the stakeholders and NC DOT meeting is scheduled for August the second to discuss access and egress from Rockfish and Gulf, Gulfview Roads in relation to the projected widening of those roadways. Curbing at the lake parking lot to mitigate water runoff through the concession stand, the curbing and stone, stonework has been completed. As a secondary measure, a limestone driveway and grass swale were installed by staff to mitigate any overflow drainage from the parking lot from entering into the building. The concession stand did get water inside this morning with the early morning flash flooding, um, but we'll continue to monitor that area. And I think that's probably to be expected, Rockfish Road was flooded, we had numerous areas flooded this morning, so. Jockey Whip Outfall Cleaner, the catch basin on the street was three-fourths full of sediment and debris. The outfall was completely blocked with mud, debris, trees, and undergrowth. Two hundred and fifty feet, linear feet of pipe was flushed clean and the outfall was repaired. The bank was lined and armored with riprap for energy, energy dissipation, and the unarmored portion was seeded. And I'll speak to these two projects that I just talked to you about, and I just want to let you all be aware of something, and the public needs to be aware of it as well. The stormwater department has recently been identifying stormwater infrastructure that are in need of repair. And as you all know, contract work is costly, and our street staff has little time to complete the projects of this nature. Stormwater technician Tyler Riddle has brought a very unique set of skills to the town and is using them to assist the residents. He has identified during regular inspections, areas in need of repair, and through his construction knowledge, has been able to plan out repair work that we are able to do in-house. We simply pay for materials and he installs and repairs them himself using the town's equipment. Maintenance worker, Alex, Maintenance Worker One, Alex Walker, has also assisted in these in-house projects. He's been able to assist in scheduling the equipment, and his ability to operate the equipment in coordination with Tyler has been a blessing to the stormwater department. The work has been done with careful planning, executed safely, while minimizing private property issues, and completed in a very timely manner. The two projects recently completed that I spoke of just earlier, Big T's and the Jockey Whip Outfall, were completed by Tyler and Alex last week. Last month, they completed the gravel driveway installation behind town hall in one day. These pro, small projects make a huge difference for the community during heavy rain events. I just wanted to bring that to light, and they are to be commended for their, um, extra, um, effort that they show. So, I wanted to publicly acknowledge that. Um, lake quarter, water quality testing results from the July sixteenth showed no exceedance levels, and the Hope Mills Lake Advisory was, um, lifted and a press release was issued on July nineteenth. Uh, believe I told you all about the, uh, clearing of the property behind USA Storage, North Carolina DEQ is investigating. Uh, last week, the sixteenth through the twentieth, ninety-two code violations were investigated. Of those ninety-two cases, twenty-eight were found to be in compliance. Code Enforcement has a new format for no, violation notification. It is a door hanger that staff can easily mark the code violation and leave at the property address. Staff will follow up to ensure that the notification was received. I wanted to highlight that, I believe they're already using this. Rachel Cotter from McAdams has informed me that the, uh, scienti, scientific survey, or the statistically valid survey, is being distributed, um, beginning last week. This process will take approximately four to six weeks to complete. In addition, the town has sent the program assessment information, which you all know is the public input survey that, um, we've been conducting. We have sent that to them so that they can prepare that section of the report. I know that we sent over two hundred surveys that we collected to McAdams, and approximately fifteen organizations were contacted by McAdams concerning conducting the program assessment. This is in addition to the program assessments that McAdams had received earlier in June. Sometime within the next few weeks, they will be sending us the demographics and trends report, inventory and, and analysis, and facility assessment. Once they have all the scientific survey results or the, the val, statistically valid surveys, they will move forward with their visioning. I wanted to highlight, um, I think I alluded to this in one of the emails to you, you all, but we have something new on the website. Report a Concern is the new feature now available on the town's website. This feature is used as a reporting and tracking tool that allows citizens to report concerns or problems that they may come across within the town limits. Once the problem is submitted through the website, it gets routed and emailed to the proper department so that the issue may be addressed. The town manager will receive the request if it has not been addressed in a timely manner, forty-eight hours, by the proper department. The proper department will reply to the citizen about the problem they submitted. The reporter or the citizen will be kept up to date on the issue by email or by logging into the website and viewing the submitted report. When the issue is resolved, the department or the employee in the department will close the case through the website, and the reporter and citizen will receive an email message that the issue has been resolved. This button can be found on the homepage of the website, and it clearly states, Report a Concern. The citizen will have to create an account to use the tracking system. Currently, we have the stormwater and code enforcement set up, and, and we will have public work set up very soon. The following are the categories that are set up presently to use. Graffiti, junked vehicle or personal property, minimum housing, abandoned housing, overgrown yard, trash and debris, flood issues, illicit discharge, stormwater or maintenance issue, and sinkholes. And then finally, I wanted to, um, just.
Melissa, can you put that on your Facebook page?
We will tomorrow. I'll have Tiffany put that, Report a Concern, we were waiting to report it to you all this evening. But we will certainly put that on our Facebook page.
Madam Mayor, Melissa, could you add to that list illegally parked tractor-trailer trucks and rigs?
We can.
Thank you.
Are you gonna have this, uh, miscellaneous or another category?
Yeah, we can have a miscellaneous or, we're, we're working through, we're gonna tweak it and see what works and what doesn't work, but, yeah. And then, as I said, Public Works will be, um, up and running pretty soon, too, so. Um, finally, uh, the mayor brought attention to the National Night Out. And, um, I just wanted to let you all know that, um, the police department needs about two hundred dollars in donations, or a donor, to donate the cost of the T-shirts. So I just want to put that out there for anyone that would, um, they've extended, they've, um, spent their budget for everything um, that they're doing that night, and they don't have enough to purchase the T-shirts. So I would ask graciously if there's anyone out there that would like to be a donor or contribute to, um, the police department getting T-shirts for that night. And that is all that I have, Madam Mayor, thank you very much.
Madam Mayor, I challenge the board to a twenty-dollar match toward the police department.
Why don't we just add two hundred dollars to their budget? You can't do it? No?
You gotta have public hearing do that.
Well, no, um, all of their, all of their money, they got grants for this, so they've spent their grant money. So, there is no public money spent on this event.
Who do they make the donations to? To, to you, to?
To the police department?
To you directly?
To the town of Hope Mills. Town of Hope Mills, or, yeah. Care of the police department.
Okay.
That would be fine.
When, when's, when's, when do you need it, chief?
I think, Drew, when do they need to know about the T-shirts?
Screen printers that are doing the T-shirts, it's essentially right at two hundred dollars for twenty-five T-shirts.
Okay.
You actually could do a better price on shirts if you ordered more. For forty-five shirts, we could do, um, would be two hundred fifty.
Two fifty.
If we did that, and maybe did put the date on the shirt, that could be used for several years instead of just this year.
Yeah.
And then we could get more and they would possibly last longer. So, um, if two hundred just gives us a twenty-five, we'll just go with this year. But if, um, we were to do the other scenario without the date on the shirts, we could get more and maybe get, maybe three or four years out of them.
Right.
Potentially, and the money could go further.
I'm, I will take care of the two hundred dollars, I'll give you the check this evening.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor.
You're very welcome, this would have been my trip to Seattle, so we'll use it locally.
Well, there you go, you guys have your new T-shirts, yay!
I'm, I'm good. I'll forget costs.
That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
My money's no good here, huh?
Well, you can, if you want to help get to the two fifty, but I took care of it. All right, next we have, um, the staff comments, so start with Ms. Starling, do you have anything?
No, thank you.
Do you have any more staff comments, Ms. Adams?
I am finished, thank you.
All righty, how about, um, Mr. Hartsock? Thank you for being here late this evening, we've been letting you go early, but it will keep you late tonight. Official comments, I'll start with Commissioner Bellflowers.
Just want to thank everybody for taking the time to come tonight.
Okay, Commissioner Edwards, is that it? Okay, Commissioner Edwards?
I'd like to thank everybody for staying tonight.
Yeah, that too.
And Mayor Proton Mitchell?
Same here, and was the air conditioner working tonight?
Yes, it is, I mean, it's turned up or, or turned as low as we could get it.
Yeah, I just thought it was in the air coming out.
I think the, the number of people in here impacted it as well, because it's nice and cool now.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Commissioner Larson?
I typically never say anything, I have nothing to say, but tonight I do. I have, gonna be fifty this year, and I have never in my life been a part of this type of abomination, of bullying, lying, deceit, painting this board to be unpatriotic, unsupportive of our military. I have never, ever been around adults that do this in my entire life, never seen bullying like this. Unbelievable. Absolutely mortified that I'm a part of it, unbelievable.
Commissioner?
But thanks for sticking it out.
Oh. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, I want to go back and say congratulations to Kenny Bullock one more. I wanna go back and say congratulations to Kenny Bullock one more time. He had a real nice little get-together last week at Parks and Rec for the Kenny Bullock Day. And on another note, one of our longtime coaches from the Parks and Recreation Program, Tommy Hanson's mother passed away this week, and she's at Pine Crest Funeral Home. Her visitation is tomorrow night from six to eight, and her funeral services will be Wednesday at eleven at Rivers of, what do you call it, Rivers of Loving Water on Bingham Drive. I just wanted everybody to know that in case they wanted to go out and show the support for Mr. Hanson. Thanks to everyone who showed up. Jesse said for coming out, and Ted for staying, and I'm gonna say for going home.
Okay, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So be it.
Okay, motion to adjourn.